Mr. President, happy birthday.
We have our distinguished resource persons who are here. Of course, our Chairperson of the Commission on Audit, Attorney Maria Grace Polidotan, good morning ma'am, thank you for coming. Chairperson Teresa, Teresita Erbosa of the Securities and Exchange Commission, good morning ma'am. Chairman of the Good Governance Commission for G O C C's or the G C G, Attorney Cesar Villanueva, thank you, thank you for coming, good morning. Chairman of the Philippine Council for N G O Certification, Mr. Augusto P I Carpio. Good morning, yes, please press the mic if you want to press the button so that you can be heard. Attorney Danny Santiago, Executive Director of the G P P B, the Government Procurement Policy Board.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
You're the Executive Director, good morning, yes, yes, thank you, thank you for coming, thank you. And Giovanni Platero, Deputy Executive Director of the Cooperative Development Authority.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning, good morning, yes, okay. COMSEC, since this is a hearing, a formal hearing, COMSEC, please administer the oath to those who have not yet taken their oaths. Those who have not yet taken their oath, please stand. COMSEC, please take over.
I'll raise your right hand. You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this proceeding? Thank you, you may take yours.
And we also have Mr. Jed Pacapac, am I correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And you represent, you are the Advocacy Program Officer of?
Code NGO.
Code NGO.
Temporarily representing our chair, she's flying in from Davao this morning.
Okay, welcome, have you taken your oath? Okay, welcome, welcome. And thank you for submitting a position paper on the matter. Okay, let's start with the Securities and Exchange Commission, where a lot of NGOs register. You did submit a position paper, and apparently from your position paper, the NGOs are also a, have also caused some good and some bad in the United States, and therefore in your, they call it the NSPOs in the United States, am I correct, Madam Chair?
Your Honor, please, the corporations are divided mainly into two big classifications, the stock and non-stock, nonprofit corporations.
Yeah, dun sa atin, will fall under non-stock.
Yes, NGOs foundations fall under the non-stock nonprofit corporations, and presently about all applications, 30% non-stock nonprofit, 70% stock corporations.
30% on non-stock?
Total applications for incorporation received by S E C.
And in your, you said there are, as of 2014 August, there are 21,000 NGOs?
Your Honor, I think there's a typographical error, I think it says of August 2013, yes.
Ah, 2013, okay, 21,000?
21,000 foundations, but I would say that only about 10,000, more or less, would be active foundations, meaning they bother to file the requirements such as audited financial statements, the schedules, the sworn statements of amounts, and applications of funds, and the certificate of existence of plans, programs, and activities.
Sige, ma'am, Chairperson, could you tell us, tell everybody for the record, what are the challenges of the SEC and how the SEC plans to, the proposals of SEC, as to how we tighten the accreditation of the NGOs in this country?
Thank you, Your Honor. When registering corporations, whether stock or non-stock nonprofit corporations, the S E C merely relies on the documents submitted in support of the application. So where on the face of the Articles of Incorporation, everything's in order, it's in accordance with the prescribed form and substance of the Corporation Code, because that's specifically set forth there, then the application will be approved. In some cases, we do require endorsements, like in the case of foundations, if they fall under the criteria of the D S W D, we would require that they present to us prior to registration an endorsement from the D S W D. For non-stock nonprofit organizations, we also require endorsements from the D O H in case it would involve some health services. We also require from the T E S D A or the D E P A D, if the purpose of the non-stock nonprofit would be in those fields. Actually, recently, we've written the Department of Agrarian Reform, as well as the Department of Agriculture, inquiring whether at this time they would want to also give us endorsements before we register, and according to those two departments, they're going to study the matter and tell us.
Yes, ma'am, but do you take those endorsements as a seal of good housekeeping?
No, definitely not, Your Honor, but-
What are the value, of what value would the endorsement be?
Okay, the endorsement would probably avoid duplication of monitoring after registration. Because if the D S W D, for example, would accredit these corporations, and under our MOA with them, we inform them if they finally registered with us, then they would also require some submissions in order to see that they're operating properly. Right now, we also require, of course, the submission of financial statements, submissions of all those other schedules and statements, but we do not have the resources to be able to monitor and check those submissions for each and every NGO. We can only do random examination, meaning we take a certain number of foundations in a year, about maybe only 6% to 10% of the total number, and that's what we examine. Of course, we examine, if there's a complaint or a referral or a tip that something's amiss with this particular foundation, we'll readily examine that. But we cannot examine each and every of those 10,000 active foundations on a yearly basis.
20,000?
We can only do it randomly, yes.
20,000?
We only have 8, 20,000, including those that are not filing, because then we would have to revoke their incorporation if they persist in not filing any of the required submissions. And we only have eight processors in our Corporate Governance and Finance Department who go over all those, who could go over all those 10,000 active foundations of 20,000 all in all.
So you have eight over 20,000? That's really a challenge, in fact, the phrase you use here, and I'm quoting, "The monitoring process consists mainly of table monitoring."
Yes, Your Honor.
And right, I mean, I would understand that. Eight processors or evaluators, whatever you call them, are in charge of 20,000 NGOs, and growing and growing as the years go by, no? I think that's the meat of the problem. So there is no, submissions are submissions, but as we have seen in the past hearings, anybody can submit pieces of paper, and of course, they'll be duly received, no? And in your paper, you, of course, you said that, obviously, you would like additional budget support to beef up your personnel.
Per our computation, if it's going to be 200 foundations in a year to be processed by one examiner, we would need at least 54 processors instead of eight.
If the number is?
200 foundations in a year by one processor, then we would need 54.
Pero ano ngayon na, so anong ratio ang sinasabi nyo po, recommended ratio, 1 is 2?
If it's 200 times 54, that would amount to about 10,000.
Pero, pero alam niyo po, base dun sa nakita natin sa mga NGOs na this, this past few hearings, hindi lang yung going over the, meticulously going over the papers, no? And finding out inconsistencies. What's important also is visiting the offices, humaharap ka sa mga tao mismo, the officers, talking to them, finding out whether they're just dummies, because if you talk to them, then you ask probing questions. After a while, you get to know whether they're legit or they're just there because their names were just put there, and-
In fact, Your Honor, we've already started since early last year, when this matter was first talked about in the media, we've already conducted an investigation on all the foundations named. They are really legitimate persons, or their addresses are what indicated. We will admit that had we had sufficient resources, including computer-assisted review, we would have probably been able to detect fraud in procuring registration at the very first instance when they supplied those or filed the applications with us. But as I said, because we are based on a disclosure system, we'll only rely on the documents submitted. However, there are certain budgets of fraud that we can detect just based on the applications. For example, we've noticed, or even in stock corporations, there could be instances where the tin is fake, or a person would have presented to us several tins, you know, depending on what application they're filing, and sometimes they do not indicate the specific addresses or things like that, which we can see even pre-registration. That's why we need a computer that would help us detect those things. Because if you go only through a quarterly review, then probably will be missed or overlook those signs of fraud.
By saying that you need a computer program, so therefore you don't have one right now?
Right now, Your Honor, we're actually having the bidding for the computer registration system. That would include having a database of all informations, tin numbers, and the bids, I think, will be open next week.
Then you should be linked up also, logically, then you should be linked up also with the Bureau of Internal Revenue, since tin is, as you said, a vital piece of information that will indicate a budget of fraud.
Yes, Your Honor, exactly, because about, in 2009, there were actually three personnel from B I R who were assigned to the S E C so that they could see whether there's something irregular in those tins that were being presented to us. And it worked for a while, but I think B I also had the need for those personnel, and since we don't have a linkage online or electronically, so we now have to rely just on whether the numbers were tin, and maybe just rely on some complaints later that this person presented a wrong tin.
But even then, given the manpower, the increase in manpower that you just said, would that manpower be enough to physically inspect premises, interview officers? Or would that require more people, more resources?
If Your Honor, please, we would not expect or even propose at this point that we will be examining each and every foundation, each and every application. Actually, Your Honor, what we would probably do is to come up with a risk-based system of monitoring compliance, as well as going over the applications filed with us. So if you are able to prioritize, and if you're able to also work with other agencies, such that there will be a clear division of how we monitor these foundations, then that would be even better for our own.
Yes, yes, at this point, I'd like to acknowledge the arrival young and energetic Senator Bam Aquino. Yes, ma'am, that's important, that there should be cross-referencing with other government agencies. Then that way, even without stepping out of the office, as long as you are, you have the computers that link, then you can match info and find out who are those, then the budgets of fraud will come out already. And siguro pag lumabas 'yung budgets of fraud, yun na muna i-prioritize niyo sa physical inspection, as a second tier of inspection. In fact, some legislators are mulling over a concept of a super-agency just to take care of investigating all and, and monitoring, evaluating all these NGOs. But I do take note of the position paper of Code NGO, where they said that it should not be put under one, it should be spread out. And I tend to agree, because the sheer number would be overwhelming for one agency, even if sources, the proper resources do never be enough. And considering that we are an island nation, to centralize something would be very, very difficult and bureaucratic. I do sympathize with the plight of the S E C. I do know the number of personnel you are working with, not only for NGOs, but for the other problems that you are facing right now. In fact, we are aware of so many of your investigations. You're not only investigating NGOs, you're investigating things like insider trading, and I know how difficult it is, given the resources that are available to you. We'd also like to acknowledge the arrival of Senator Sunny Angara. So Chairperson Erbosa, is there anything else that you wish to? But by the way, yung sistema niyo ng endorsement, I don't think you should continue that, because like I said, I asked you if that would be, the certification would be a tantamount to a seal of good housekeeping from that agency, and you said no, and that might even create confusion and pinpointing of responsibilities as to who will monitor that NGO. Kasi magkakal, kung may magkaproblema sa bin, di, endorse niyo sa amin eh. Di, endorse lang naman yun, ano ba naming endorse, pirma lang yun eh, di ba? So it might create more problems rather than solutions.
Actually, we're, like for example, our relationship with the D S W D, we do have a MOA in existence, so the division of work is really quite clear there. And we usually focus more submissions like audited financial statements, which we look for some discrepancies or misrepresentations, which we also correlate with their sworn statement of amounts, sources of funds, application of funds, together with the certificate of existence of plans, progress, activity. And in certain instances, like for example, the COA has come up with a report, we also compare all those figures in our submissions of these foundations with the report of the COA, and see if there is also some either overstatement of expenditures or understatement of fundings received.
Okay, yes, it's here, in your recommendations, setting a criteria for selection of NGOs that will be subjected to off-site examination, off-site or onsite examination.
So, Your Honors, actually made the form for all these schedules and sworn statements more precise. So now, if your foundation receives, for example, foreign funding, we require that you indicate the specific source of the foreign funding, and also what kind of donor was the one, that was the source of the funding. It's not only, I would say, related to whether or not the foundation receives government funds, because even private funds may have some strings attached or what, so we do require full disclosure on those matters.
Thank you, Senator Angara.
Thank you, Sir Chairman, magandang umaga po sa ating lahat. Ang tanong ko po, Mr. Chairman, para kay, sa hepe ng S E C, is ano po 'yung universe ng NGOs which are registered with the S E C? How many, how many are there?
As I said, two kinds of corporations, basically, stock and non-stock nonprofit corporations. So under non-stock nonprofit corporations, we have all these kinds of associations, alumay associations, we have tricycle drivers associations, we have the condominium corporation, we have foundations, we have NGOs, and that would number about 250,000. Foundations, only about 20,000. So different classifications, and basically NGOs are required to submit a certain list of requirements upon application for incorporation. On the other hand, foundations would have two additional requirements, like we require foundations to have at least 1 million in capital stock, and they're also supposed to submit a statement that they're willing to be audited by the Commission.
Yes, so napakarami ho, no, yung 250,000. Atsaka, yung requirement ng 1 million for foundations, when was that? I think last, mga 10 years ago, yun, ano? That was around 10 years ago, so nakita natin na kumonte ang foundations, at karamihan ay bumuo ng mga NGOs, so. So it's not really feasible, Mr. Chair, na ang S E C, I don't think the, does the S E C have the manpower to really physically inquire into these or into these associations na binuo para tingnan kung bona fide sila or genuine? Parang hindi yun yata ang, it's not within the competence of the, kasi alam ko sa corporation, sa monitoring pa lang ng general information sheet, sa mga compliance requirements, eh hirap ng S E C, sa tamahu ba yun?
Your Honor, please, maybe we'll view it from this angle, that the S E C has two major laws which it implements, the Corporation Code, Securities Regulation Code. Of course, when it comes to publicly listed companies, we do examine them every year, each and every one. However, with respect to corporations right now registered with us, about 800,000, even assuming that only a half of that is active, that would mean 400,000. And I said about 30% would, every year, constitute non-stock nonprofit organizations. So there'll be two stages where you can monitor or examine these submissions in the pre-registration, and that's based again on disclosure. We also have to comply with our ease-of-doing business obligations so that we would rank high in the competitiveness. So you cannot-
Halos, Senator Bam, pagka pinahirapan niyo.
Yes, and we cannot really, at that point, require documents, ask them to explain, because that will really prolong, and we're targeting one-day registration. So now, post-registration, of course, if there's a complaint, somebody writes us and says that corporation is fake, or that corporation put in a fictitious name, then that's the time we investigate, we call them for a hearing, we call them for conference, we send out people to investigate. All the rest, we'll just have to do random. And we sort of want to attain a certain number per year of random checking. That goes even for stock corporations. As I said earlier, we only have, while we've created a new department that would look especially into these NGOs, foundations, non-stock nonprofit corporations, we have to calibrate our resources and try to apply them evenly, maybe adopt a risk-based scenario where we'll only be really looking after those troublesome ones.
Yes, the fact that you have to adopt a risk-based scenario is in a sense an admission that it's physically impossible to oversee all of these associations, hindi ho ba?
Yes, Your Honor, in fact, there was an expert from UK who came over to do a study of non-stock nonprofit corporations here, way back, I wasn't at S E C yet, but I saw him again later, and he was talking to me about that, and I said, no. When I said, when I came in, I even added to those requirements, and he said, no, you don't do that, because you don't make it difficult for them to register, because you know, it's the right of everyone, constitutional right of everyone, to associate, to form associations. So I said, but how will be able to weed out the ones who incorporate just to do something fraudulent? And he said, you have to adopt a risk-based scenario. In any country in the world, that's what they have done, because they do not really want to eliminate these foundations who really do good by and large.
That's right, ho, it's a fundamental right, at nabanggit na huh nga dati na there are some associations which are formed for legitimate purposes, at kawawarin 'yung mga legitimate NGOs, like Gawad Kalinga, who really have, who helped the state forming governmental functions. Pero parang pag sinabi mong NGO, ang reaction ng taong bayan eh, parang masama na, negative na po 'yung konnotation niya. So anyway, I'll leave this S E C alone, Mr. Chair, but I think to every agency, siguro, yung standing question natin is, looking back, ano 'yung mga holes na pwede natin i-plug sana within the system? Siguro, Mr. Chair, let's look at the flow of the money, no? Mula nung, ang sistema niyan, for example-
54321, inalat na ng P N P Kalinisur ang sampung L G Us na nakitaan na may pinakamataas na kaso ng iligala droga, ayon sa talan ng P N P.
And say we need a certificate of good standing, that I think is a way also of being able to check on their compliance.
Who issues the certificate of good standing?
The S E C.
The S E C?
Yes.
And what is the basis for the issuance of that?
Only also monitoring compliance with our requirements. Also, look if they have filed A F S, we will ask our Office of General Accountant to see if the A F S is in order.
A F S is a financial statement?
Yes.
Why, what is the A?
Audited financial statements, then we see if they've submitted really bases all those schedules that are supposed to be attached to the financial statements, as well as the sworn statements of amounts and application of funds, sources.
Since you brought it up, looking back, pagka may system ganun in place, because you weren't, I know you weren't the chair when these things happened eh. Let's say, na audit itong mga NGOs ni Napolles, eh, the problem is, wala naman 'yung pangalan ni Napolles sa papeles dun eh, di ba? Wala siyang pinirmahan na, she certifies that all the papers are in order, et cetera. Wala rin yata 'yung pangalan nila Ben Hurd dun sa papeles. I think they used ang testimonies, or maybe in some, no? Pero yung testimony is na, parang damis talaga 'yung ginamit. But how would that system have worked if we tried to abstract it, ho?
We actually see that it doesn't work that well, because they could submit any kind of financial statements, they can even show that the disbursements tally the receipts. But in the case of those foundations that you mentioned, we noticed that there were only two auditors doing all the financial statements, and maybe they should have rung a bell. If we had that database, that we could have seen that there were only two auditors doing the financial statements. Another one is, we should have seen at that point that there were only two banks, or one bank, issuing the certificates of deposit of the 1 million requirement for foundations.
Well, how many people would be doing the job of this certification, of the random checks? Is it a particular office within the S E C that would be doing?
Whenever there's an application for the issuance of a certificate of clear- of clearance or good standing, actually, all the departments would have to get their, to give their inputs on compliance. If, for example, they'll have to look at the Enforcement and Investor Protection Department, whether there's a pending investigation. Then they'll have to ask the Corporation Registration Monitoring Department, whether there's an application for some amendment or some other failure to file the GIS, no? So, all the departments will work together, and it's eventually the Corporate Governance and Finance Department which issues the certification.
Yun nga, siguro, just like in the anti-money laundering bill, there are some transactions which raise red flags. Siguro, we have to look for those red flags, the equivalents of these red flags in, when it comes to these corporations, interlocking directors, maybe something like that. But that's not, in itself, that's not punishable, no? Because that's a common corporate practice.
Although, right now, we're also putting up a database that would show us if, let us say, a group of persons, related persons, incorporate with such frequency in such a short period of time. Like, for example, five foundations today, and then they come back next week incorporating another five foundations.
Yes, that definitely would be a red flag.
Although, of course, law offices do that. They incorporate...
Yes, but Madam Chair, also in this case, remember that Ben Hurley testified that they would wait three years before they actually use. So, may foresight sila, actually. Hindi naman in-incorporate or finorm 'yung NGOs within a short period of time. So, talagang, it's a well-thought-out scheme eh, if you look at it eh. Talagang, and it seems that 'yung tatlong nabanggit niyo, 'yung random complaints, they're very good schemes, no? To ferret out itong possible fraud. Pero, parang, ano pa rin. Siguro, if we add up everything, the little things that all the agencies do, it will add up to some really very good safeguards, Mr. Chair.
But, Madam, I guess it's really clear that we need the technology, no? Because what's to stop them from disaggregating their batches of the NGOs that they want to register? So, one will be in Baguio, one will be in Camarines, Naga, one will be in Masbate, one will be in Dipolog City? Please.
Your Honor, we'll also have to connect with our eight extension offices. We've already, since I came in, required the extension offices to be allotted the territories under their care. And they're supposed to monitor closely foundations, among others. Actually, when the computer system of SEC was set up, that was way back in 2005 or 2006, the parameters were still not as advanced as today. Like, for example, if you want to put in a database, you'll have to encode manually each and every data in the application. Think now, you'll have the program where you can just scan, and the minute it's uploaded, then it can already provide as a database for checking whether, for example, if a certain person now is incorporating today, you can readily see how many has incorporated in the past. So, maybe that would serve as a trigger at that point.
Senator Aquino?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, you raised the topic of technology already, no? I just wanted to follow up. Chairperson, kapag, for example, meron pong red flag ang COA dun sa isang NGO, does that information get to the SEC? Whether manually, meaning it's sent to you that, "Please check these NGOs", or through technology where may flag na siya na dun sa database ho ninyo, ay lumalabas na may mga issues tong mga specific grupong ito?
If you are pleased, for this particular matter, we did receive from COA the report beforehand. So, we were able to plot out already, insofar as the financial statements by these foundations are concerned, whether they drive with the findings of the COA.
For this particular case. But in a regular case, where COA might find irregularities with particular organizations, meron na po bang proseso na may automatic flagging yun sa SEC? I don't think there is, no?
Not yet, Your Honor, but we were talking about it, in fact, I think, two months ago, that we will enter into MOA or some form of agreement. Yes. Because right now, the COA really sends people to us in order to data mine our database and in order for them to be able to complete their investigations. And they really stay there weeks end in order to complete their investigations. Same with the BIR.
That's very good news, no, Chairpersons? That's very good news, no? Kasi kung tutusin po, kung hindi ho nag-uusap-usap 'yung mga ahensya, talagang makakalusot 'yung mga gustong makalusot sa atin. In fact, maybe not just COA and the SEC, but really, the goal is to have all of our government agencies interconnected, such that if an implementing agency finds irregularities with one, it can be tested across all of the different agencies, no? In fact, in the last hearing, when Janet Napolis was here, it was revealed that she was already investigated for the fertilizer fund scam in 2005 or 2006. That should have been a flag already, no? And so on and so forth with the rest of the other NGOs, no? So, baka rin ho kasi, nahanapan sila sa isang agency, lumipat lang ng ibang agency, at dun naman na gumagawa ng masama. So, you know, the interconnectedness is very important. And I really laud Senator Gingona for having this hearing, because, you know, admittedly, it might not be as emotionally charged as our previous hearings, but ito 'yung tinatawag nating system changes eh. The changes we need to do in the system to really be able to plug in the holes and to make sure na hindi nito mauulit-ulit. So, that's probably one major aspect of the, probably of the committee report, Mr. Chairman, where we can really propose that government goes through of the process of interconnectedness and transparency. Kesa sa meron mga, may mga pockets in government that they can enter and really create havoc in, we would rather that it's all interconnected, no? And I'm sure with that interconnectedness, marami pong marereveal dyan. If you're connecting BIR, SEC, Customs, Implementing Agencies, COA, then I think there will be a process of really cleansing the ranks, cleansing all of these different organizations in government. So, thank you, thank you for that good news, Chairperson Herbosa.
Just one point, Mr. Chair. arising from the chairman's and then Senator Aquino's interjection regarding IT and information sharing. We'll go back also to not so long ago, 'yung legacy scams, and the one in, what's his name? 'Yung sa legacy, si Celso Delas Alas, Delas Alas? Delos Angeles, sorry, Celso Delos Angeles. And a man scam, more recent a man scam. Kasi, ang nangyari dun, parang napalusutan din 'yung mga regulatory agencies eh. Ang sabi ng BSP, eh hindi naman, hindi naman bangko yan, di strictly banking yan. Sabi nung Insurance Commission, ay sa SEC yan, sa ano yan. Tapos, sabi nung SEC, sa ganito yan. So, that seems na may mga butas talaga 'yung regulatory framework natin, which is why maybe some can, 'yung ibang bansa, ang gusto nila, basta financial services, isa lang ang regulator. But sa atin, we have, we've chosen a system na kada classification natin, meron tayong individual regulator. SEC sa mga corporation, Insurance Commission for insurance companies, the BSP for banks, and the financial institutions. So, yun siguro, although medyo labas na yan sa scope ng pork, ng ampedas scandal, it's still within our jurisdiction as legislators to see how the public can be protected against this sort of schemes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, in fact, I do remember Commissioner Biasson was telling us one time that 'yung magagawa ng mga, gusto, may mga gusto mag-volunteer tumulong sa anti-corruption sa Customs, sabi niya, 'yung ano lang, 'yung pagche-check ng mga, those that deal with Customs eh, kailangan tignan ng mabuti eh. Nobody's looking at it now, at that point. Yes, there's really a need, no? But it's not only the Securities and Exchange Commission that registers NGOs. We have the Cooperative Development Authority that's here for co-ops, Department of Labor and Employment for labor organizations, the Home Guarantee Corporation for Homeowners Association. Have I missed anything else? Mr. Pakpak, do you, have I missed anything else? Pakapak, sorry.
No, sir. Generally, those are the widely accepted registering agencies.
So, we have four? Four. SEC, CDA, Department of Labor, and HGC for Homeowners Association.
Dole, and usually, there are also a lot of NGOs registering with DSW. A lot of traditional NGO operations fall under...
DSWD? Okay. I wonder if they have juridical personality, if they register with DSWD? Anyway, let's look into that. That's interesting to look at. Meron palang DSWD?
Actually, sir, most, a lot of implement, aligned agencies have worked with NGOs. So, they have different kinds of accrediting or having partnerships agreements with NGOs that they work with. So, DA also has some kind of system. DAR has system of partnering with agrarian reform beneficiary organizations, people's organizations.
Oh, yes. Sir Chairman, may I interject?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, just to clarify, no? I think what Mr. Pakpak is mentioning are partnerships. Because NGOs, and as you know, I've come from the NGO sector as well, marami ho talagang partnerships yun with different agencies, no? But to give it first, a juridical personality entity, it's still with the SEC, no? If they want to register as a non-stock nonprofit. So, kapag sinabi po nating non-stock nonprofit or NGO na pwede mag-trans, may resibo, may bank account, that's still with the SEC, no? Even if you partner with these agencies, I think they will still require that, especially if there's a transaction, that you register with the SEC. If I'm not mistaken, Chairperson Herbosa, no?
It's true, Your Honor.
There are some associations or groups which are informally put together that, excuse me, may not necessarily need a personality yet, no? But they partner with different groups, that's also possible. But usually, if that particular entity really engages in transactions, they will still need to go to SEC to really register. And I think that's the common practice, no, if I'm not mistaken. But, of course, in the course of doing their service, many of them will partner with different agencies. Even the National Youth Commission partners with youth organizations. So, if I'm not mistaken, practically, all agencies in government would have partner NGOs at some point. But if they are bona fide and through NGOs in the sense that they do their service, they would at some point probably SEC and register themselves, no?
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for that. Punta naman tayo sa cooperatives. Mr. Platero? Narinig niyo po 'yung sinabi ng SEC? Ang kakayahan po ninyo pareho sa SEC? Ilan pong registered cooperatives all over the country ngayon po?
Your Honor, we have 23,461.
23,000?
461.
Okay, so more or less, halos pareho kayo ng SEC, kung ganun. 22,000, thereabouts, 23,000. Sila, for the 22,000, they have eight personnel. Kayo po?
We have 500 warm bodies as of the moment, out of 736 planted opposition.
Yeah, but those 500, are they in charge of monitoring, evaluating the authenticity? Iba 'yung warm bodies, iba 'yung evaluators. Kasi 'yung otsyo nila, evaluate, nag-evaluate talaga yun.
Yes, sir.
Ilan 'yung talagang in charge, monitor, pag-evaluate na mga kooperatiba?
In terms of granting the juridical personality for the cooperatives, we have 15 regional offices and we have 15 officers evaluating the registration document of those applicant cooperatives.
Granting or evaluating?
Evaluating, and...
Ano pong proseso nyo ng evaluation? What are your parameters and what are your standards for evaluating? Whether a cooperative is worthy to be registered as a cooperative, or whether the cooperative is a bogus cooperative and will be used for other purposes?
Yung pong framework ng Republic Act 9520, which is the cooperative code, enumerates the requirement by which a group must submit to the Cooperative Development Authority as basis of the CDA to grant them juridical personality by issuing certificate of registration. First, they must submit atticus cooperation and bylaws, economic survey, a minimum membership of 15 persons, a minimum capitalization of 15,000.
So, you're just taking to that? Kasi, yun po, ano, pareho lang naman sa SEC yun eh. Submission lang naman yun, papel lang naman yun eh. So, you don't go beyond that?
We do a regular inspection of the cooperative through our Cooperative Development Specialists. Nationwide, we have assigned the Cooperative Development Specialists for every congressional district that do inspection and monitoring, Your Honor.
For every congressional district, meron kayong inspector?
Yes, Your Honor.
That's 200, more or less, mga 200 dyan? And they inspect their cooperatives all over?
Yes, Your Honor, we have 250 Cooperative Development Specialists that do the inspection and monitoring of the cooperatives.
Have you ever closed any cooperatives for being bogus? Alam niyo, nung, ang mainit ngayon, 'yung rice trading, 'yung rice smuggling, at nakita namin nung last hearing, hindi last hearing, pero last Congress, nakita namin, natuklasan namin sa Bloribo na maraming kooperatiba dun, na medyo, kung pupunta mo, pupuntahan mo, yun nga, ganun eh, 'yung simple process of physical inspection of the office, makikita mo ka agad kung bogus o hindi eh. So, have you ever closed down any cooperatives? Because you found them to be...
Yes, Your Honor, yes, Your Honor.
You did?
May mga kaso na nasarad, na issuehan namin ang tinatawag na cease and desist order in regards to that issue of rice importation.
So, marami na kayong NGOs na cooperative na natuklasan all over the country? Because it's impressive. You have one evaluator-inspector per congressional district?
Your Honor, at talagang napakahirap po sa pila officers namin ang lahat na nakobisita, but we are exerting effort. At least, once a year, the cooperatives are visited to determine whether they are operating or not operating.
Senator Aquino?
Yep. Dalawa ho kasi 'yung pinag-uusapan natin, no? One is the ease of registration, and the other is to check the fake ones, or 'yung gumagawa ho ng mali, no? And this is a delicate balance, no? Hindi ho pwede tayong mag-swing masyado sa isang side, no? On one hand, as many of you know, no? We've been pushing for ease of doing business, ease of registration, whether it's an NGO, a corporation, a business, or even a co-op, no? At 'yung isang batikos po sa gobyerno, ay napakahirap mag-register, napakahirap magkaroon ng legal entity dito sa ating bansa. And as Chairperson of Trade, Commerce and Entrepreneurship, alam naman ho natin na 'yung isang tinutulak talaga natin, 'yung ease of doing business. In some countries, it takes you mere minutes online pa. So, mas madali talaga magkaroon ng legal personality para makapag-negoso niya, para makapag-transact or gumawa ng serbisyo in the case of NGOs, no? But we also have to take note that there will always be a percentage who will do wrong, no? I mean, ano yun, given yun, no? Hindi lang yan sa Pilipinas, sa lahat ng mundo yan. Meron talagang porsyento, nagagawa ng mali. Unfortunately, because of the lack of our IT systems, hindi natin nasasabi kung anong porsyento yan. And does anybody care to guess how, what percentage of registered co-ops are bogus? Or what percentage of registered NGOs or corporations are actually transacting illegally? I would say it's less than, ang tingin ko naman siguro, less than 5%, yan? O baka even smaller pa? Would you have any specific number? Yes, Chairperson Herbosa?
If you are pleased, it's between 1 to 5%. That would include those who do not file, and not only those really, really fraudulent.
Okay, so we're talking 1 to 5% sa co-ops po?
Wala po kong statistic in terms of... Wala po kong statistic in terms of determining which cooperative is bogus or not. But suffice it to say na, ang sinisigurado namin na pagka binisita, meron silang upisina at nag-ooperate.
May nahanap naman ho kayong... In short, sa lahat na napupuntahan niyo, pasok lahat? O meron naman ho kayo nakikita na you disallow or pinapadissolve ho niyo?
Uh, yun po 'yung proseso, pagka siya ay walang upisina at hindi na nag-ooperate, then the process of...
Pero meron pong ganun?
Meron ganun po.
Okay, so would you say that's what percentage of all of the co-ops you visit? Hindi naman ho siguro lalampas ng five percent rin yan, or one percent, no? So my point is, even five percent, I think is quite generous, no? Medyo malaki na ho yan, kung tutuusin, five percent of twenty thousand is still a lot, no? But let's say it's five percent. Yung ninety-five percent, kailangan, oh, natutulungan natin, nadevelop natin, nabibigyan natin ng lahat ng tulong na kailangan nila. Kasi ito 'yung mga gumagawa ng tama. So I think that has to be said first and foremost. Because through this process of the pork barrel scam, talagang napalala ang pangalan ng mga NGO, napalala ang mga pangalan ng mga co-ops dito sa rice smuggling case naman ngayon, no? But we have to state, no, ninety-five percent, according to our friends from SEC and CDA, are doing good. Tama po 'yung ginagawa nila. So yano siguro, especially for our friends in media, importante intindihin, ninety-five percent niyan gumagawa ng tama. Pero 'yung five percent, yan po 'yung gumagawa ho ng mali in the billions of pesos 'yung nawawala sa taong bayan. And we need to focus on that five percent. Now, 'yung eight personnel, Chairperson Herbosa, even for that five percent, parang hindi yata match ho yun, no? Kasi I'm not sure if that those eight people can really be able to, you know, to monitor that five percent properly without the use of technology. And the good thing is, you know, the Senate has the power of the purse. We're here to allocate budgets and to stamp, to really push for priorities. And definitely, I think, this interconnection in the technology piece must be a priority. Kumbaga po eh, kapag nag-register ang isang NGO, hindi mo naman masasabi ka agad kung tama o mali. Kasi malay mo, totoo yan, di ba? In the case of the LUI NGOs, they waited three years before they did anything, di ba? So for the first three years, technically legitimate talaga sila. They only become legitimate nung may ginawa silang mali. Now, the question is, pag may nagawa ng mali, pag may nasmuggle na nabigas, o kapag meron ng bogus na transaction, how long a period does it take for us to find out if they are indeed bogus? And how long does it take for us to bring them to justice? In the case of the pork barrel scam, years ho yan. Kasi if I'm not mistaken, Chairman Grace, no? Two thousand six ba 'yung pinakamaaga po nito, two thousand five?
Uh, the special report on the PDAF po was for the period two thousand seven to two thousand nine. And this report came out in two thousand thirteen, so it really took a lot. But I would like to make of record that even before we came up with this special report on the PDAF, the COA has with a lot of, has been reporting a lot of findings on an agency-specific basis. For example, yun pong ZREC, at tsaka 'yung ZREC, NABCOR, 'yung mga ganyan, which were the conduits in the PDAF, no? Years before, ang dami na ho naming mga findings. Not, 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 not as categorically stating that, you know, that there's a scam going on, but there have already, the heads of the agencies have been called, their attention have been called repeatedly. Nagbe-build 'yung kanilang mga unliquidated cash advances. And these are cash advances that they were transferring actually to these NGOs, no? So pero hindi po naman nila inaactionan 'yung aming mga findings, no? And in our humble opinion, what this showed us really is, kung sa batas po, I think that we have enough. We have good laws even, including rules and regulations of the DBM, of the GPPB, of COA, of the SEC. Ang problema po na nakita namin 'yung pagpapatupad, there was not a faithful execution of these rules and regulations.
Can I push this further, Chairman Grace, no? Kapag ang COA po, nagbigay ng finding na, oh, bantayan niyo na to, malaki na 'yung perang unaccounted for. For example, you give it to the head of the agency, they don't do anything. The next year, nandyan pa rin yan. What is the course of action of COA? Can you file a case with the civil service on that agency head? Or do you file criminal charges? What usually is the process po?
Uh, yun ho 'yung ano, 'yung pagbe-build up ng unliquidated cash advances. There is a technical difficulty there because until they are liquidated, we cannot audit. Uh, kasi po, saan napun... Kasi when you talk of audit, we are looking for saan napunta ang pera, paano ginastos. But for as long as it is booked, only as a cash advance to whomsoever, to an NGO or whatever, a recording that it was transferred. They're supposed to liquidate because we have all these regulations, when to liquidate, what documents to submit. At ang magpapatupad po dapat nun, 'yung ahensya.
I have a question, ma'am. You have a COA report, let's say this is, you're saying na during that period, no, so mga two thousand seven, two thousand eight. My COA report stating this questionable, is that the right term, questionable or suspect?
Yes, 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 sir.
Questionable item, it goes to the agency head, the agency head, you tell them, please resolve this. Ganun po yun, di ba?
Yes, yes.
It's not resolved. Where does that report, does it go to the president? Does it go to the cabinet? Does it, where does it go?
Every audit report, sir, we, of course, the agency has a copy. And then we send a copy to the president, we send a copy to the Senate through the Senate President, we send a copy to the House of Representatives through the Speaker, we send a copy to the DBM. Then, kung depende ho, kung halimbawa 'yung mga DA-attached agencies, siyempre, 'yung DA, meron din po silang, nabibigyan din po sila ng kopya. So lahat po ng aming audit reports, meron po kayong kopya dito sa Senado? In the same way na meron din po sila sa Kongreso. Uh, what we did last year, two years ago, kasi po, when I came in, I saw the billions in unliquidated cash advances or cash transfers. So what we did was, sabi ko, we better make a final demand on all of these agencies, no? To do something about it, and we even published that in the newspaper. My theory being that we have a provision in law, so kaya nga, meron mo tayong batase, 'yung pagpapatupad lang. We have a provision of criminal law, that when somebody is given a cash advance and is not able to liquidate that within the prescribed period and upon demand, no? There is already a presumption in law that that money was malversed. So that is what we did. I came up, sabi ko, this is going to be a final demand. Whoever has cash advances in his hands must liquidate already. And we have, we were able to come up... We were able to come up with a list of these individuals and organizations that have not made liquidations. And we are now, sir, in the process of making suyod so that we can file the appropriate cases through the Office of the Embudsman. We wish that we could be more expeditious, but as Chair Herbosa said, we have the same problem. We are not computerized. We are beginning to get computerized, but notwithstanding, we are doing our best to address this matter.
May I clarify that, ma'am? So you're saying, oh, that currently, apart from everything else that COA is doing, you're putting together the list of unliquidated cash advances which have lasted maybe at minimum of a year or six months? And gaano po katagal 'yung mga unliquidated cash advance na yan?
Sir, ten years back?
Ten years, but...
Ten, fifteen years back, yes.
So fifteen years, hindi pa nababayaran? And you're putting together this list and you will file criminal charges against these officials?
Yes, sir.
Whether they're currently there or wala na po doon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we will see this when po?
Uh, Alex? Um, Alex, Director Juliano, who's our Director for Fraud, is the one, is our point person. Two more months to go now, sir.
And if you can give us just a preview, ma'am? What amounts are we talking about and how long po ito na hindi nalili-liquidate?
Yeah, yeah, sir, we will do that.
Now, if, can you give us a preview? Like, are we talking in the millions?
Billions, sir.
To an agency or to a person?
Uh, there, well, in the aggregate billions. There are agencies, one agency lang would have a billion or so in unliquidated cash advances. It's also possible, yes.
Thank you very much.
Certainly very revealing, uh...
Marami pong ano.
Certainly very revealing. But I'd like to reiterate the point of Senator Baum, no? That we have to have a delicate balance here when it comes to the registration of entities because at time of Pilipino, we tend to have the pendulum swing from one end to the other and we would like to caution against making it difficult for people to register. Yes. Uh, you mentioned, no, you mentioned the COA report, ma'am, going to the agencies, then to Senate, and to the House of Representatives, and to the DBM. Uh, and you cited NABCOR and ZREC. Uh, but now there is a new entity that you can submit it to and has the...
GCG.
GCG. So let's go to Attorney Sergeant Villanueva. Sir, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman.
Yes, GCG, give us a brief background so that people who are listening would know what GCG is all about. And what are your powers? What can you do?
Perhaps the best way to give a background is by addressing the concerns that have been raised by the other agencies. The Governance Commission was constituted in October of two thousand eleven. So this is our third full year by two thousand thirteen. We inherited a total of one hundred and fifty-eight GOCs and some of them we excluded from our coverage by provision of law. Some of them we actually abolished or declared them officially dissolved. We're down to about hundred and twenty-one GOCs now that are active. And by the end of this year, we hope to be below a hundred GOCs under our supervision. Unlike in the case of SEC where they have to grapple between the ability to be able to register, we don't have that difficulty. It almost takes an agency to go to an eye-op needle in order to be able to register with an SEC. What would amount to a GOC? We approve it mainly because we are, we are, we are in an area where we're supposed to do governmental work, public work. And the only way by which the, an agency now creates an unchartered GOC or a GOC that's registered with the SEC, it must have a commercial function. And our general rule is that government has no business being in private enterprise or for-profit unless it is an area that the private sector can well undertake. So you have to prove to us, when an agency comes to us, that it is so necessary to organize through the SEC a GOC that will undertake commercial activities. Because our general rule is that let the public, let the private sector be the one to undertake that. So that's what we also did under our, under our charter. We granted the mandate to look at every GOC that's there and to determine whether it's still relevant to national development. And that among the mandates is that in areas where a GOC is no longer the purpose for which it was originally constituted or it is in an area where the private sector already does a very good job, we ought to abolish it or privatize it as the case may be. And the good thing about our charter is that it, there was a tendency in the past for the GOC sector to go to blot, to bloat. And today, there is not a single GOC, non-chartered GOC that can be created unless the losses, there is a recommendation coming from the GCG to the SEC in order for it to be approved. So we have worked very closely with SEC on this. And there are GOCs where the terms were about to expire, they were requesting that they be extended. And we wrote to SEC saying, it does not make sense to extend the term. It has not been a very profitable or a good GOC, so let its term end. There are GOCs that, because they're governed by their own board, who want to expand, to increase their mandate or to source more capital. And they would do that through SEC in the past, they cannot do that now without going through us. So that's what we want to make sure that there's no GOC that is operating out there that has, that is not fulfilling the national development mandate. When it came to ZREC and NABCOR, even before the PDAF controversy were out, we already looked at all of this, together with other GOCs like Technology Transfer, TRC, NLDC, HSDC. And even before the controversy broke out, we already submitted recommendations to our principals that they should be abolished. For example, in the case of ZREC. ZREC is one of the highlights that ZREC sought to prove to us, to show that it should continue to exist, was the fact that it was profitable. And yet, we saw there that a great part of the income that it was receiving was a three percent commission from PDAF. And we didn't know that there wasn't anything going wrong there. But if the only reason why a DA charter, corporate arm of the Department of Agriculture, able to survive because of something that it does by sourcing it out to NGOs with, it felt that it shouldn't exist. In other words, the government goes out of its way to register a GOC and instead of being the one to undertake it, being properly manned to undertake it, it goes out and sources it out to NGOs, then that GOC does not have any reason for being. So we recommend that it be abolished. NABCOR, NABCOR is consistently a losing proposition. It has forty-one regular employees and it has been losing, so from that alone, we said it should be abolished. We have the luxury, compared to SEC, we have the luxury of going through them. We go to each of their offices, we look at what, what people they have, we look at the assets they hold because this is government asset, and we do evaluate on how to do it. That's one way in which to ensure that this doesn't happen. When you have a lot of GOCs, non-chartered GOCs, there, having been organized by different departments, they tend to be vehicles because they tend to be outliers. There're none of them, no government agency actually monitors them. So we will close this down so that only the big GOCs, the ones that are doing important work, remain to be monitored. The other one is we follow the carrot and stick procedure. For example, when it comes to advances, one of the things that we determined when we were constituted and we sat down with the chair and her commissioners early on, is that we promised that any audit observation memo, notice of disallowance, even if it's not final, we will take seriously and we will put the government, our boards and management to task. In other words, we take them seriously. Because it made no sense for us for COA to be doing a fine, a fine work over the years and none of these observation notices ever see the light of day. So one of the things that we did was, in each of our GOCs, when we do performance agreement, by the way, that's what we do, our other mandate is that the boards of directors do a corporate visioning, they do targets that are measurable. And at the end of that year, we will determine whether they have met those targets. And if they have not met those targets, they will not qualify their, their people to the performance-based bonuses. So in other words, motherhood statements with us, wonderful corporate visions and missions do not mean anything to us. We sit down, parang revalida sila, the whole board, and then we set targets that are measurable. And when we can't measure them, we work with them and able, be able to measure them. And therefore, we, what we do is at the end of the year, for example, the two thousand thirteen were negotiated. At the end of this year, we're now going to be measuring whether they have performed them. One of the items that we did was advances. When it comes to performance-based bonuses, in order for the problem not to grow, one of the things that they had to do is certify under oath, they will qualify only to the performance-based bonus only if, uh, they're able to show that they have their advances within a certain number of period. If they're, and they're unable to do that, then they do not qualify for the performance-based bonus. That's quite telling, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman. The reason for that is the ones who usually get advances are usually heads of agencies, the directors and officers. And yet, when they do, they don't liquidate their advances within the period mandated by law, it is their rank and file employees who will now suffer. So we make sure that they're accountable to that. So in their own official and personal, uh, uh, department, they must make sure that they do discuss advances, they report them and liquidate them. Otherwise, they will have a rebellion in their hands because it would have been their fault. The others, uh, there are corporate governance conditions that they have to fulfill 100%, like, uh, seal of, uh, housekeeping. And then the other thing is, they must always report back to us on every audit observation memo or every notice of disallowance that they have received. And they must have ensured that at the end of that year, they must have, they showed to us they have worked it out with their auditor or they have come into a concrete time-bound arrangement with COA by which to do this. Again, if they have not fulfilled this as heads of agencies, directors, then they disqualify their own officers and rank and file people. So they try to make sure that they do this. Those are the, the steps that we are taking, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, in order to ensure that, uh, when it comes to, uh, the future, uh, such, such items, uh, such controversies as Pidap will unlikely happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, uh, Dean, Dean Cesar Villanueva. Um, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of our Majority Floor Leader, Senator Alan Kaitano. Good, good, good afternoon. Uh, good morning, sir. Uh, well, uh, Madam, uh, Chair, Chair, Chair Grace Pulido, you seem to have a policeman as far as GOCs are concerned. At least meron talagang papansin ngayon sa, sa audit findings and hindi lang papansin to make sure are dealt with and complied with, answered adequately.
Sir, yes, uh, thank you. And I, we, we, we are really very, very happy, uh, working with the GCG and I think that's one of the more significant things that has happened in the last two years, the creation of GCG and the way that it has been working so far. I just wanted to add to, uh, what Dean Villanueva said, kasi napag-usapan nga ho namin ito more than a year ago. Yun din hong, uh, uh, siguro kakulangan, I, I, I don't know if the right, if that's the right term. But, um, the members of the Board or management of, uh, of, of GOCs parang sa tingin namin, di nila masyadong naintindihan kung anong papel nila and how they should act responsibly. Uh, lalo na ho kung, uh, kung medyo naassign lang sila. Again, in the case of, of NABCOR and ZREC, no? Most of the members of the Board there are, are either under secretaries or secretaries of the Department of Agriculture. So sila sila rin. And yet, parang hindi nila masyadong nagiget, I'm sorry if I have to use the term. Uh, kung, how is this? For example, in Pidaf, uh, nagpasahan po, uh, when we ask the agencies about, "Why did you choose this NGO? Why did you give it to the NGO?" Eh, yun ho sinabi ni Senator so-and-so, sinabi ni Congressman so-and-so. Parang, uh, parang wala naman yatang naglakas loob sa kanila na sabiyan, "Sir, hindi ho po pwede, kailangan hong dumaan tayo sa proseso." So it's either they did not have the, the, uh, the prudence and, and, and the, the nerve to, to say that or hindi talaga nila masyadong naintindihan na yun trabaho nila, yung mag-vet. So I think, uh, we discussed with, uh, Dean Villanueva that like in the private sector, meron ho 'yung mga seminars on good governance. Talagang it's really, uh, it's a training for members of the Board of Directors so that they will, uh, know exactly what their responsibilities are, how they're supposed to go with their jobs and so forth and so on. Anything being implemented already by the GCG.
So it would be better to institutionalize that, that whoever is appointed in the Board, aside from the capabilities that he has, has to mandatorily undergo a seminar on good governance? Would that be a good idea?
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Cause especially, uh, in government, you know, there are a lot of rules, uh, that are not, uh, that are not so obvious when you are not in government, so...
And, and let's face it, let's be, let's be frank about it. I, I, I would suppose a lot of those appointed in the past, uh, and I don't know if in the present, are, are appointed because of political considerations, yeah, rather than their technical, financial, their, their capabilities. Uh, Dean Villanueva, do you, uh, do you submit the reports also to Senate? Your reports also to Senate and Congress?
Uh, yes, Chair, we do. We, we have submitted our first 200-day report, uh, both to the Office of the President, to the, to the House and to the Senate, uh, through the, um, Speaker and the President, as well as our 2011 and 2012. So we submitted them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Senator Aquino?
Just a quick question for Dean Cesar. Uh, you mentioned though earlier that, um, the GOCs that were implicated or that have been found out in the pork barrels scam were already found out previously in your report, no? As being somewhat questionable, no? Were there other GOCs that you found aside from ZREC and NABCOR? And how many of your GOCs under your care now, uh, have you recommended to be abolished? Or do you think are actually in, in, in a questionable situation?
Questionable situation means that if you look at them, they really serve no other purpose. They do not meet, uh, the public purpose for which they were. Aside from, uh, NABCOR and ZREC, we have, uh, we have already, uh, gotten the official abolition of the Human Settlements Development Corporation, HSDC, the Philippine Agricultural Development Commercial Corporation, PADCC, um, the San Carlos Fruit, uh, Corporation, the Philippine Vegetable, Fruit and Vegetable Corporation, um, the Southern Philippines Development Authority. Um, quite a few number and now in the works would be, as we will submit shortly, the abolition, the formal abolition of NLDC as well as TRC. Uh, we, we focused into them precisely because they were in the middle also of this, uh, controversy. And, uh, the others would be a consolidation by way of abolition. Of many of the, uh, non-chartered, uh, GOCs, non-chartered SEC of PNC. PNC has become a, a holding company, uh, more than an operating company and has worked through, uh, its many subsidiaries. We now want to just bring them up to PNC so that it can now fulfill its main role as an energy, energy company.
Uh, Dean Cesar, apart from TRC, NLDC, NABCOR and ZREC, are there still existing GOCs that serve the purpose of being conduits or have served the purpose of being mainly conduits for Pidaf?
Uh, aside from, uh, NLDC and TRC, no more, uh, we didn't find any.
So aside from the four that were, uh, I guess that are in because of this scam, wala na pong ibang natitirang GOC na conduit lang ng pork barrel?
None that were, uh, that, that, uh, were the subject of, uh, the COA audit, uh, Mr. Cesar.
But in your, ano ho, in your 120-something, um, GOCs that are under your care, have you found any other?
Philippine Forest was, is already, uh, also abolished. That one we also became the source of. Bukid Non-Forest is right now in the, it is now submitted to the President for abolition.
So Phil Forest, Bukid Non-Forest?
Bukid Non-Forest is, uh, is, uh, is not, uh, in the Pidap, uh...
Okay.
Radar, but even that, we have submitted for, uh, for consideration for proper abolition.
Just for the, just on the Pidap radar, Dean Cesar, anything, any other GOC?
Uh, on the, none more.
None more, no more? Okay, thank you.
Uh, well, Senator Ginko asked me to preside in his absence. He just went to the CR. I, I have a question for, uh, COA Chair, Ma'am Grace. Ano po 'yung period, is it a uniform period to liquidate 'yung unliquidated cash advances across the board sa, sa gobyerno?
Uh, depende po yon, kasi 'yung ating pong cash advances are general, uh, divided three, three general classes. We have the, you know, the regular cash advances, naka-identify po yon. We have the special purpose and we have the time bound, no? Uh, or one time, for example, you get a cash advance because you're, you're celebrating or you're organizing an event, uh, an anniversary perhaps, yung mga ganon. Iba-iba po 'yung mga timeline, but, but we do have circulars on that and, and all agencies have copies. We publish the circulars in the papers and it's also in our website. So there are no secrets insofar as these rules are concerned.
And ano po 'yung periods of time relative to 'yung mga binanggit ninyo?
Um, anywhere from, uh, in the regular, ano, anywhere from 30 to 90 days po. Depends on the item of expense, no? And then 'yung sa mga iba, uh, say mga, uh, 60 days on the average from the time the activity has been completed, uh, or the purpose, the specific purpose, uh, has been, uh, achieved.
For purposes of filing cases, kailangan ho may demand, kasi sa civil law may, kailangan may ganun.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, I thought it prudent. I thought it prudent to have a demand, yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Madam.
And we've been making year in and year out.
I'm sure, I'm sure. Salamat ho, Ma'am Chair.
Senator Kaitano?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, to our guest, Chairman Pulido and, uh, my dean and law professor. Morning. Um, Chairman, I was listening to, uh, and watching the television. I heard the explanation of the SEC Chair, Isar Boasa. And I'd like to congratulate you in, in terms of pag may research ngayon or may investigation regarding, uh, mga corporations, mga, uh, 'yung data that the corporations are supposed to submit, sino incorporators, medyo madalina, no? Wouldn't this also be one of the solutions to monitoring, um, uh, NGOs and any entities dealing with the government? Parang may FOI tayo type na it will just be on the web. So meaning, for example, the city of Ganito or the province of Ganian and then, uh, or Land Bank or Department of Agriculture has a deal with this NGO. You can simply go to the internet, uh, it up. Tignan mo, anong pangalan nung NGO, sino 'yung officers, i-presmo, kusan 'yung lugar, et cetera. Because there are so many networks now of also NGOs and investigative journalists and even private citizens, di ba? So halimbawa, nakalagay doon, ang address was tagig. It'll be easy for me to look at it, dahil tagaroon ako. If the address was, uh, in Bukid Non or in Mindanao, tagaroon si Senator TG, he'll be able to look at it, no? So may, uh, aside from the, you know, beefing up, the COA, the SEC, our regulatory bodies, it's really making each and every, empowering each and every Filipino to be a graft, uh, buster and investigator, no? So maybe this is one of the regulations that we can impose on, uh, corporation, I mean, on listed corporations, you can basically get all the information, di ba? You just go to the website of the Philippine Stock Exchange and you can basically get, uh, all the information and any changes in, in stock ownership, leadership, uh, disclosures, di ba, are all already provided. And maybe we can do this so that, kasi 'yung balance naman po, di ba? If 'yung regulators or 'yung policemen become too, um, uh, too involved today activities of private business, that's the other extreme naman eh. 'Yung isang extreme ho, di ba, 'yung parang pinabayaan natin and as, uh, the COA Chairperson told us, di ba? Uh, not, this is not her word, but my, my words, garapala na 'yung nangyayari, di ba? Na parang, uh, as if no one will, will find out the conspiracies and the, uh, you know, the, the schemes and scams that they put together, no? So that's just one proposal and, uh, I do, as far as corporations, ma'am, is e- even if they're not listed corporations, will you be able to search for them already in the internet?
Yes, Your Honor. In fact, um, we have the largest corporate database actually in the Philippines. And right now, this even available for public viewing through the SEC iView facility. But you'll have to get a mailer card from our, um, headquarters, uh, the SEC main office in order to be used that. But for this year, we're already going to provide for online payment. So you don't have to come to the office and get that card. You can already view whatever documents you want. In fact, we're also coming up with all those statistics and putting them all together. Funny information system. That will be maybe for next year if we get the budget for that. Because we, when this Yolanda thing happened in Leyte, there were some organizations who came to us wanting to know what are the businesses registered with us located in Takloban and all the areas hit. And we were able to give it right away because they would like to, instead of giving money, would like to help those businesses be revived. So we're, we're very proud of our database. In fact, you just, um, for example, um, you'll have to go through us, of course, not yet available online. If, for example, you want to know, uh, Juan de la Cruz, how many corporations or associations have, uh, appears as an incorporator, director, or stockholder, member, you can easily do it, uh, through our, uh, office and our systems. That's why we're able to service a lot of other agencies like, um, the Ombudsman, the OGA, COA, PNP. Uh, practically, all the agencies write to us and ask us for all this, um, um, reverse search, uh, facility to be able to trace the, uh, business dealings of, uh, some, uh, people under investigation.
I won't criticize, ma'am, because as I said, I see that the SEC is going towards more transparency and putting order into that. And, um, when it comes to the listed companies, they're much less listed companies compared to companies registered in SEC. And of course, listed companies have a certain level of sophistication considering their capital and everything. But eventually, as our, both our Benjamin and our, the Benigno and the Benjamin of our, of the Senate, Senator, um, uh, Bamakino was saying, di ba, na dapat integrated, no? For example, and I don't know which government agency, whether it's the COA or, or, you know, it's the NEDA or whoever should suggest to the government, what Senator Aquino was saying is, everything should be integrated. For example, no, the Brujaha, two weeks ago, about the NBI and the NBI clearance and the lines, no? Many people, even foreigners, when they were watching TV, I heard some say, "Why do you need NBI clearance in the first place? Shouldn't you, if you were an employer, shouldn't you just have to go on the net and put in the name Alan Kaitano?" And you would see there if he had, or, or, or not, no? Why require, why require, uh, Juan de la Cruz to line up for a day or to pay this or to pay that? Then some require, some, uh, employers also require a city clearance, a police clearance, an NBI clearance, all kinds of clearances when, in fact, um, technology nowadays sort of allows this. Again, no, if mag-iintegrate 'yung, uh, 'yung, uh, 'yung systems natin, no? But to leave that point, Mr. Chair, and maybe discussion with the technical working group or during the budget hearings, no? This is not, uh, precisely on topic, but intimately related with, with what we're talking about. If the good Chairperson of the COA would, um, accommodate my request for updates. Um, if you'd remember, ma'am, one of the criticisms, not only of your office, but of this administration, and of course, we are part of, people in front of you are also part of this administration, um, is that one-sided lang daw, kung sino lang daw 'yung mga kalaban ng administrasyon, yun lang daw inimistigahan. And the good Chairperson has already explained a million times that their rights, no, meaning she started the investigation. The Pidaf was, uh, '07 to '09, right, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
'07 to '09. And therefore, you know, they, they have to follow the, the, the timeline. In fact, I told people, when you did the investigation, actually Senator Estrada, Senator Enri Lee were allies of the administration. And I was the minority leader. I was not an ally of the administration. So when you actually did the investigation, baliktad, it was the allies of the President. It was only in 2013 that, uh, there were realignments, no? But having said that, ma'am, uh, Ben Harlu himself, no, in, in this hall told us that 2011, 2012, he was still dealing with DA, no? So meaning there, there were still, um, uh, funds, no, floating around or flow, or going towards Ms. Napolis. Uh, secondly, you already mentioned that, uh, there are certain other agencies, like forestry, that you're looking at. Thirdly, like two weeks ago, um, and, and now, no, over the cell phones and internet, lumalabas 'yung presyo ng bigas bought from Vietnam. And of course, many people do not know the technical, the published price. Uh, if the published price is cheaper than the bided price, tama ba yon and everything? That's why there's so much reliance on the COA report. So may I know, ma'am, whether, uh, we will see in the near future, no? Um, uh, special investigations or whatever you call them, or regular, uh, audits on, on, uh, on this, no, on, uh, 'yung mga nabanggit ni Ben Harlu or those issues floating around the, the media nowadays?
Uh, sir, uh, for 2010, 2011, 2012, we actually...
Sir, for 2010, 2011, 2012, we actually have audit reports already. And, but these are not consolidated in one special audit report like this because something like this would take years to finish. But we did this audits on a per-agency basis. So still, if we look, if anyone would like to see our audit report on ZREC, on NABCOR, on NLDC for 2011 or 2012, they can go to our website and they will see that we have practically the same findings involving practically the same personalities, well-reported. What we also found, sir, I think this is 2011, 2012 already, that there was less and less funneling the funds through government corporations, but to the LGUs. Kaya po, meron din po kami 'yung mga findings na dyan, I think I mentioned them before, Dinalupihan Bataan, Pilar Bataan, some municipalities in Nueva Ecija. Meron po kami mga PDAF findings, mahalos kapareho po ng nakalagay dito, pati 'yung modus operandi, parang ganito din po, and they are reported. So I think what I'm saying, sir, is that's why we don't need to do a special report again, because we have, in fact, audited them. Now, as to the NFA, we have already commenced with a fraud audit of the NFA. Because we reviewed the audit reports on the NFA for the last five or seven years. And we, on the basis of that review, we saw some badges of fraud that perhaps we need to look into more closely. So I think about two weeks ago...
Ma'am, what's the difference between a fraud audit and a special audit?
Sir, the fraud audit is a kind of a special audit, but it is more focused on fraud. I mean, the initial assessment already points to a scheme that may be fraudulent.
So, ma'am, for example, if I say, where's the regular audit for Department of Agriculture or DAR for 2010? Yun 'yung may resident auditor and then it goes through the process, yun 'yung regular audit. If someone requests na, "Oy, special audit niyo naman," yung generic na special audit, meaning you're not looking for anything in particular, but you will redo or you'll take a second look in, with their paper trail and everything, no? 'Yung fraud audit, 'yung parang sa, "May nakita na kayo," and you're focusing on that possible fraud or discrepancies that, the discrepancies is of the nature na parang fraud na. Kasi diba, minsan may discrepancies na would warrant a special audit, pero hindi mo pa naman sasabihin na fraud. Pero it's suspicious or fishy.
Yes, yes. For example, we see some, there could be a possible payroll padding or ganun, or ghost delivery or something very specific.
Like the condition of cash transfer, example, no? Even in the regular audit, the COA has found that there are, there were families who were given the funds twice, no, a couple of things. Just to prove the point that the COA is trying to be, at best possible, means colorblind or politically...
Yes, we are, sir.
Politically colorblind, no? But having said that, ma'am, 2007, '08, and '09, although it was under a different administration and a different COA, also had regular audits. But because, nah, there was so much, what, evidence, noise, suspicion of conspiracy, no, and of a big fraud, no, like the Napolis scam, that you decided to do a special audit. So, ma'am, in the case of Senator Coco Pimentel, no, he said he never signed any document and then lumabas na meron request for 10 million and then napunta sa LGU and that USEC is still in the DA. And then si Ben Harlu said, "No, I was there. I did that, I did that request. I thought it really came from you, Senator Pimentel." But to be fair to Senator Pimentel, Ben Har never met, well, never saw him, it wasn't from him. So instances like that, ma'am, will that, you know, sound of alarm bells in COA and it will, will it trigger? I mean, I'm sure you're monitoring our hearings and media, no?
Yes, sir.
So just to assure the public that when there are issues that come up, even in this administration, COA will, one way or the other, be on top of it.
Yes, sir. A good example would be the hearing on the rice smuggling, on rice smuggling. I think that we picked up a lot of information already, like the use of dummy cooperatives, the big price differences in the price of importation, things like that, Your Honor.
Ask more searching questions and the names, et cetera, but it might interfere with your ongoing investigation. So for now, I'll be happy to know that, you know, when Ben Har or any of the witnesses point to any officials, regardless if they are incumbent in this administration or past, regardless of political parties, COA will continue to take a look at it, with that assurance, ma'am.
Be assured, Your Honor, yes.
Ma'am, I don't know if you're the right agency to, or the right person and agency to ask, no? Maybe I should also ask the executive department. But we're going through a cleansing period in our, you know, in our history. And watching one of these movies, to pick up from a line there, sabi nga nun, nun bida na kontrabida is that you cannot be half a gangster, no? So relating it to us, we cannot be half a graft buster. Now, as far as the public is concerned, government is government, then people is the people. So even if the prosecutors are good, pag nilaglag ng judge, or even if COA is good, pag hindi na file ang kaso, meaning, ma'am, ang tingin ng tao, simple lang, may mangyayari ba dyan? So pag may nakasuhan, may nakulong, you're successful graft busters. Pero kung na privileged pitch or na COA, pero hindi naman na kulong, or hindi naman na pinasoli ang pera, o hindi na-recover, nag-file ang gobyerno. In people's eyes, merong ganun, no? So I was just wondering, and of course, we've gone so far, no? I mean, precisely why you're in the news a lot and why your office is becoming controversial because of the hard-nosed investigation and steps you've been taking. But I was just looking through the news and everything, no? And I saw this name, they said that NABCOR President Haveliana was introduced to Napolis and Louis by DA employee named Manuel Harmin, no? This is found in inquire.net and I have the HTTP, no? And it seems harmless and et cetera, but then we looked up, who is this Manuel Harmin? And found out that he is now the acting director of Livestock Development Council, Department of Agriculture. And he has been the acting director since 2010. So we dug a little bit deeper and we found out that there is such a corporation of Jimmy's Bar and Grill, seems to be, or belong, or incorporated by Jimmy Napolis, the husband of Mr. Napolis. And this is already in rappler.com, no? So it's, it's not my independent investigation, just looking through the different news services and agencies, no? And apparently, even in COMELEC, Manuel Recto Harmin is listed as a nominee of an admitted Napolis party list, was it smile, A smile, in 2007, no? And the reason, ma'am, that I bring this up, because when I was chair of the Blue Ribbon Committee and my colleagues here were mostly still with the House of Representatives, and Bam was still in his house, studying, and we investigated the life court, if I'm not mistaken, for the swine scam, wherein billions of pesos were supposedly given to farmers, et cetera, no? So my concern is, one, how he got appointed to that, and number two, if he's intimately related with the Napolises, you know, why he's still there and if there's anything going on? I guess it's a wrong question for the COA because you don't audit appointments and everything. But may I bring this attention to the, to the committee, no? That I believe in the sincerity of the president for the complete, you know, cleansing and going after all those who in graft and corruption. But I'd just like to point out to the committee and to the chair that there are still a lot of loose ends here. And lastly, Mr. Chair, just as a manifestation, I was asked whether the committee is ending the hearing. And I said, "We may be ending, it's possible that the chair wants to put some closure to parts of the hearing." But as far as the NGOs and if the chairperson of the COA can confirm, ma'am, tama ho ba na, 'yung Napolis NGOs were only, what, less than 15 or 20% of all the NGOs in this special audit?
I think eight lang, sir.
Eight percent?
Ah, dun, no, eight, eight...
Eight total? And more or less, ma'am, ilan ang...
But in Malampaya, 12.
12?
Yes.
And we're looking at how many?
We looked at 82 NGOs all in all, pero hindi naman lahat po yun, ay, while there are some deficiencies in compliance, hindi naman lahat po yun, eh, mukhang fraudulent.
Yes.
So, but anyway, we've given all the list to...
Well, thank you for that clarification. It'll be unfair naman sa 88 if we say they're all fraudulent and they're not. But having said that, Mr. Chair, as we ask our resource persons to assure us that they will not let up and they will be politically colorblind, I guess the assurance also comes from the committee that we'll look also at these other NGOs. Because even our colleagues here have asked us, "Bakit Napolis lang? Bakit kami lang? Bakit eto lang mga NGOs?" And the chairman has explained, there has to be a starting point, eh? And yun 'yung may whistleblowers, yun ang merong evidencia, but we'll not stop there and we'll go from there. And I'd like to thank you for that, Mr. Chair, and maybe you'd like to reiterate that assurance that we're going to look at that. And then lastly, Mr. Chair, you know, maybe the public also knows a lot about these people or have done their own research and should feel free to send information to the office of the chairman of Senator Gingona. Because bits of information, we want this cleansing or this, we want this to be a full anti-graft movement and not just a partial or, we don't want it to lose momentum. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you, Senator Allen. Yes, hindi pa naman tapos ito because there is Malampaya. And Malampaya, I understand, the Janet Lim Napolis is still involved. Am I correct, Madam Chair?
All of the 12 NGOs that we found to have received the 900 million, Malampaya funds was given to the Department of Agrarian Reform, yes, sir. Only Napolis-linked NGOs.
And as far as the other 82, magandang punto po yun, that yung 82 pala NGOs, yun ang universe niyo na tinignan niyo, pero hindi ibig sabihin na lahat nun 82 eh fraudulent, hindi po ganun.
Opo.
Ah, very good point, very important, yes.
Pero may mga deficiencies po.
Iba po 'yung deficiencies, iba po 'yung criminal activity. Opo.
Mr. Chair, just for the GCG...
Senator, yes, Senator Angara.
With your indulgence. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sir, 'yung binanggit niyo, 121 active corporations under your AGs, lahat po yun non-chartered? They are, meaning there is no special law which set them up? They're set up under either the corporate...
Marami po doon ngayon, chartered na. Because you've tried to get rid of the non-chartered ones that were just collateral based.
Right, right. So of the 121, ilan po doon ang may sariling bataas? Ilan po?
My recollection is about 80 to 90 of those would be chartered, Mr. Chairman.
Doon naman, who's, you mentioned about you want to keep the GOCs doing important work. What is your standard or, what standards do you have for considering it as important work? You mentioned already earlier that it's doing work that the private sector cannot do. Aside from that, what else would you consider?
Our charter actually points to the Philippine Development Plan in evaluating GOCs. And we've gone through what we call performance agreement negotiations with each of the operating GOCs to set out their targets for 2013 and 2014. And it's all based on, towards the promised milestone achievements of the current administration. So whenever they sit down with us and do their corporate plans and their targeting for 2013, 2014, we always say, "You start with." And it starts with what we call the societal impact, inclusive growth is, and development. And from there, we question, we try to determine what a particular major final output has when it comes to that, to the mission and to the fulfillment of the president's promise to the people.
I realize, Mr. Chair, we might be going on tangential points. So I'll just ask for a list of the 121 remaining government corporations under your watch and also a copy of the report that you submitted regarding their performance. I think it's useful for the education of a new senator like myself. Thank you.
Yes, we'll do that.
Thank you, Senator Angara. Before we go to the others, there's just this, yes, this, check, Chairman, Chairperson Bosa, sa SEC ba, you mentioned kasi that you need to pay in order to get the info. May nagtatanong talaga, tsaka napansin ko, hindi ba to public information? Bakit po kailangan magbayad?
Well, when they, I guess, acquired that system, they probably felt that they'll have to add to the revenues in order to justify some budget for the maintenance of the system, the buying of the servers, increasing the capabilities, because it's a lot of electronic records and you would need more gigabytes or something.
You need funds for maintenance?
Yes.
Okay.
Buying all those hardware. But it's only, it's very nominal. I think it's only 1 peso per page, 10, 5 pesos if you're going to print it out.
Well, yeah, I understand, I understand the economics of it, but on principle, maybe if the FOI is passed, then you have to take a look at that practice again, it might contribute in the FOI.
In fact, we're all for that. That's really good to have a portal, a government portal where all databases of the different agencies could be accessed. I think we've generated something like 2 million a month from people wanting to view the articles, the bylaws, the financial statements of companies which do submit this.
Okay. Can we go now to PCNC, Mr. Carpio, Gusto Carpio? Yes, I'm, PCNC is a private organization, am I correct, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
But you're an NGO?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So you're non-stock?
Non-stock. It's an aggregation of accredited NGOs headed by a nine board with the co-chair, the BIR Commissioner is the co-chair.
The BIR Commissioner is the co-chair?
In the executive order.
Yes, because I think your main function is to accredit NGOs so that when people or corporations donate to that NGO, that donation is now tax deductible. Am I correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if the BIR gives you the donee institution status. The PCNC recommends to the BIR, after evaluating the NGOs, recommends to the BIR which NGOs are valued to have the donating institution status, which gives you, as you said, tax deductibility perks.
So without the donee, what do you call it?
Institution... Donee institution status.
Without the donee institution status, even if you're an NGO, if someone donates to you, that's not tax deductible?
No, sir. You're even, sorry, sir.
Go ahead.
You're even, you're even levied the 30% donor's tax.
30% donor's tax, okay. And even, but if you give that NGO the donee institution status, is that, in your opinion, because I don't know if it's officially, but in your opinion, or is it official, a seal of good housekeeping?
Yes, basically, the mandates, if I may add, are two-pronged. First is you get the seal of good housekeeping. These are NGOs who apply for accreditation from PCNC but do not need the BIR certification for tax deductibility. They just want to prove that they were, that they were accredited by PCNC and have the seal of good housekeeping. The second mandate is for the...
Take muna po, that's an important point. You mean, meron mga NGOs na, they apply to you not just, not to get the tax deductibility, but just to say na, "Oy, PCNC accredited ako." So therefore, it's may seal of good housekeeping.
Yes, po. Especially, if I may, if I may cite an example, for this, there are a lot of international donors and international donors call PCNC and try to find out which, which are the legit, if we can call it that way, which are the accredited NGOs of the PCNC. And they will... And they will channel donations to those, ah, NGOs.
Ayun pala eh, very important yun, ano?
But these donors abroad don't need a B I R certification from P C N C.
Yes.
Because, ah, in this stage, they have their own five-oh-one, five-oh-one C.
In other words, gusto lang nila malaman kung sino 'yung matino. Para mapagtatilaan ang pera.
Because, ah, just to clarify, Mr. Chair, ah, you've been asking our government agencies on the process. Let me also share with you what the process of P C N C is.
Yes, please.
So that at least you can have a, a macro view
Go ahead.
of how the accreditation processes are. In P C N C, basically, it's a self-regulating body and it's not funded, not a single centavo comes from the government. It's the member organization or the accredited organizations that help each other in accrediting, accrediting peer organizations. So in, going into a, to an NGO to accredit, it is composed of at least three persons. One should have an accounting background to look at the financials. And the other areas that we look at are governance, linkages, operations. At 'yung puntan nung niyo, sir, na physical visibility on, on the accreditation process, our team goes to the NGO. Ah, there's an hour in the three days that they're there, that they talk to the board, they talk to the staff, they talk to the beneficiaries. There are project site visits and there are checkings of the financial statements. So that's how in, intensive the accreditation process of P C N C is. And after which, a recommendation is done by the accrediting, accrediting team and passed on to the board. The board meets once a month to look at all these accreditation requests and after which, they send it to the B I R for final approval. Accreditation is given one, years. So the checking is one, three, and five years. So our team goes back with the previous recommendations and check if these were, these were done over the years.
And those that you accredit, regardless kung SEC sila, o cooperative sila, o dole sila, registered, or panay SEC lang ba?
Hindi po, pati po eskwela, nagaccredit po kami. Basta nonprofit, yun lang po 'yung, ang definition. If it's nonprofit...
What about cooperatives? Have you encountered?
No, sir, because they have their own law, they have their own code. There's a cooperative code.
Yes.
So they follow their own cooperative code. NGO has none.
But if, if, if a cooperative were to go to you and say, "Yeah, I want to have a seal of good housekeeping," will you entertain them?
Why not, sir? Ah, I think there's, ah, we will not be having any problem. But the, I, I think the, the issue there is if they would, if they would accredit with so many accrediting bodies. Because for sure, they would have to be accredited by C D A.
Yes, after C D A, okay, now I'm, I've complied with C D A paper requirements. Now I want to prove to the world that I am a, a corporate, a cooperative that practices a seal of good housekeeping.
Yes, sir.
So I go to you. You entertain them?
Yes, sir. Ah, in fact, if you would go back a step, C D A also issues a seal of good housekeeping. So now, I think that would be, that would be the issue, even in the accrediting process. The issue is, government agencies accredit NGOs. We accredit NGOs, but what is the real standard? Because the manner of accrediting are different, the levels are different.
The standards are different.
The standards are different. So, once you say, for example, a, an organization accredited by another accrediting body, does it have the same value as what we accredit? That's maybe a, a thing that we could, we could look at.
Yes, that's a good point. Ah, Chair Erbosa, I see that you want to talk.
Yes, in fact, ah, it's good that the Chair of the P C N C is here because that's precisely what we're going to put P C N C-registered, non-stock, nonprofit corporation, the low risk. And we don't have to, ah, maybe prioritize them in the random examination. So that would save us some foreign resources.
Marami salamat po.
Kayo po, Mr. Platero, Director Platero, nag-iissue pala kayo ng, as mentioned, nag-iissue kayo ng seal of good housekeeping?
Ah, yes, Your Honor, ah, the certificate of good standing that we issued annually to all registered cooperatives that complied with the submission of the administrative requirements under the code.
Okay. Ah, Mr. Carpio, ah, in the light of this hearing and the pronouncements and what's with... Are you prepared for the deluge that might come for accreditation?
Yes, sir, no problem. Because, ah, apparently, we're here. We're here basically, the mandate is to help government. If the problem is basically operational, I think we can tackle it operationally. If applications come in more than what we expected, I think we study also our organization.
Fantastic.
Because most of the, please understand, sir, that most of, most if not all of the accredited organizations are business. So they have this business acumen of trying to organize things and if, if need be, reorganize your organization, your structure, so to fit in to the needs of what has to be done. So that's, that's how we, we look at it. We're not closing the door if, for example, the number of applications increase by one hundred percent. We have to increase our, our capability by a hundred percent.
So you're, 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 again, to repeat, you're a private organization.
Yes, sir.
You're a private NGO. And yet, your co-chair is, is from government?
Ah, yes, sir. Ah, it, it is under the executive order that the co-chair of P C N C is the B I R commissioner or his appointed representative.
Why are you subject to an executive order?
Sir, that was the basis for our creation, sir.
Ah, I see, I see.
We were created by an executive order in which we signed a MOA with the Department of Finance in ninety-seven, giving us the mandate to accredit.
So you're, you're, you're private, but your creation was government-initiated? That's, that doesn't, you're not, you're not, you did not register with the SEC as a non, as a...
We are registered with the SEC, sir.
Ah, I see. Senator Bab?
Good morning. Um, morning, Sunny.
Hi, good morning, sir.
Yeah. Um, well, as Sunny knows too, and the members of P C N C, they know that I'm a big fan of that setup, no? Actually, it's a, it's a model on how the private sector can work with government, no? In fact, um, if more bodies like this could be set up, for example, ah, the groups, the, one of the ideas was the microfinance groups could also have a similar setup where they police themselves, no? Or even social enterprises can police themselves. Ah, P C N C has always been seen as a model, no? By which the sector itself is actually, um, ah, making sure that, ah, it, it does the right thing, no? And, and, ah, P C N C has been a model for, for decades in, in, no? My only comment, um, is that, ah, in our experience also, previously in the NGO sector, it's really difficult to get a P C N C accreditation, no? And maybe that's on purpose, no? But, um, the, the fear there is that if government only transacts with P C N C accredited groups, initially, it will only transact with the big foundations and the big NGOs and those who have had a long track record. It might not be able to transact with relatively new or startup, ah, service organizations or civil service organizations, no? So my suggestion, and this is of course unsolicited advice, if one of the governance measures is to move towards, um, having government, um, work with P C N C accredited, maybe P C N C can also look at the different, um, the life cycle of an NGO or the life cycle of a civil service organization. In the same way, in enterprises, you have micro, small, medium, and large, no? You don't expect, um, the micro to have audited statements by S G V, obviously, diba? But you expect that from a medium or for a large, probably, from a, from a good auditing firm. But not from a micro, must developmental 'yung approach. What skills do they need so they can actually grow to a bigger organization? They can expand their reach, they can help more people. So maybe for P C N C, ah, you can look at that also, that, um, the current process, and this is of course just a comment from people in the NGO sector, that it's quite strict, definitely because may kasamang tax ano yun eh, diba? Tax implication, maybe that can be for your gold standard. But, ah, if you had processes also, ah, for smaller organizations that maybe didn't require, um, ah, the, the numerous paperwork and, and a lot of the, the track record that's needed now for the P C N C accreditation. Maybe in that sense, ah, government could still work with the smaller organizations. Again, no, we're talking about ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of all of the real NGOs in the Philippines, diba? Still be able to go through a process similar to what you're doing, but maybe simplified. And then, ah, as the benefits get higher, as they reach, ah, working with government, ah, and of course, meaning getting funds or even getting a tax, um, a, a tax incentive, ah, deal for their, for their donations, ah, then they move up the chain. Rather than just one process, ah, which either gets you or doesn't get you the, the tax incentive. In that way, um, P C N C, aside from being, being an accrediting body, can serve a developmental, ah, ah, purpose also for all of the NGOs, no? Kasi nakita rin ho natin na, sometimes NGOs, it begins with just one person with a good idea. I mean, groups like, um, a number of, of NGOs these days start that way na, ah, maliit na grupo, nagkaroon ng isang idea. Admittedly, hindi pa ganun kaganda 'yung mga sistema, wala pa'n track record, pero maayos naman. They can already be maybe, ah, a different type of, ah, seal for good housekeeping, for that type. And as they grow, gumaganda 'yung kanilang serbisyo. Eventually, at some point, they get the, the tax donation, um, ah, the thirty percent, ah, sorry, the, um, the, ah, tax deductible status. At some point, maybe then they can transact with government. But it becomes part of a process rather than just pass or fail, no? Which I think is the, the current process now.
Certainly, that. Number one is, ah, the reason why we have one, three, and five accreditation terms is for new and complete documentation, we give the one automatically. And we study them for one year. If we see their processes are improving and, ah, there are control mechanisms inside, then they go to three. So it's, it's graduated also on, on the performance of, of the, the NGO. Second is, ah, the, the documentary requirements that you were saying that were very strict. In one of the meetings we had with Commissioner Kim Henares, he was even saying, even if you go straight to us, it's the same kinds of documents that we will be asking from you.
So from, ah, um, if maybe you could have something where we can separate the seal of good housekeeping and the, the, the tax, ah...
Ah, okay, sir.
Yeah, meaning, um, 'cause, 'cause we went through that, no? And I know other groups who have gone through that. Even 'yung one-year status niyo is really quite difficult, no? So I think in that sense, it, ah, it cuts the sector into those who are maybe more equipped, ah, those who have, um, maybe are foundations or, or who have the capacity to have an accounting office, while we know that the rest of the NGO sector are, are more simple organizations, no? So maybe they can pass through the process. Ah, at the end, after they graduate, they get that status from B I R. Admittedly, kailangan nga naman, ah, mabigat 'yung requirements doon. But even a simpler process wherein, um, ah, you can check on how they're doing, ah, you can guide them along, ah, make it a graduated process para hindi lang siya pass or fail na you get one year or you don't, diba? They can be part of that process. I think that will help a lot of the, the NGOs also in terms of moving up the chain.
Yes, sir.
Well taken, sir. Sir, if I may add, ah, even in the process of us evaluating, there are certain control mechanisms that we place in certain things just to improve in governance, especially on governance. Like right now, we've required corporate foundations and family foundations and I think the religious sector to have at least one independent director, something like that. So, an independent director define as one for corporate, one for family, and one for religion. So we, like, for example, for corporate, one independent director would mean somebody that's not connected into the, to the number of companies that you have. Not even a director, not even an independent director of any company that you have. For family, second degree of consanguinity, you have to have an independent director. So these are the things that we also input to improve in governance also of NGOs, not only small, but also the big ones.
Okay, but I'd like to, that's a very good point, that you, if you could have, um, ah, steps or categories, because some would just want a seal of house, good housekeeping for starters. Tsaka na 'yung tax deductibility, dahil hindi namin kaya 'yan, paumpisa lang kami. Pero matino naman kami eh, pero kung, kung isang pass or fail lang, baka mahirapan talaga, so... And in the light of these hearings, baka marami nga pupunta sa, sa inyo para magaccredit just for the seal of good housekeeping.
Sir, ah, just to, maybe just to rebut a bit, ah, it's nice to have that, but as I see, at the end of the day, we will be tackling standards already. Because we will be having different standards for different types. So that has to be studied. We will have to study that. Because if we talk to standard, it has to be just one. Ah, because that's the standard. So, but if we have standards for, for different types, I think we have to study that also. But thank you for the suggestion or recommendation. We will do it, sir.
Okay, um, Code NGO, Mr.?
Mr. Chair?
Ah, Senator Angara, please.
Just a few questions if, ah, it's all right with the committee, ah, for, ah, P C N C. Good afternoon, huh?
Good afternoon, po.
Ah, it's my first time actually to be acquainted with this board, so, ah, I was reading the executive order seven-two-zero. What is the composition of the board of the P C N C?
Basically, it's nine, ah, ah, nine members coming in from accredited organizations within P C N C plus the B I R commissioner as co-chair.
So ten, including the...
Ten, sir, yes.
And who are the accredited institutions there? I, I read in the E O that it's, ah, um, associations or federations of NGOs, no? Who, are those the ones you're referring to?
No, sir. Ah, those six are the ones who established the P C N C. But there are three hundred, between three hundred twenty-five to three hundred seventy-five accredited NGOs with live accreditations, because these come and go, ah, because of expiry of accreditations. Ah, we have between three hundred twenty-five and three hundred seventy-five. And the nine board members come from these organizations.
How do you choose? Is it like, ah, like a corporation based on your ownership of the...
Sir, every year, we have a general assembly in May and, ah, we have elections every year.
Okay. So who, who's on the board currently?
Ah, right now, ah, I'm the chair, my vice chair is Tesi Angsi. Ah, the members are, ah, on the corporate side, Linda Atide of S M Foundation. Ah, I represent the Boykis Foundation in the board. Um, P W D, differently-abled, is represented by Tahanang Walaghagdan. Ah, Father Anto Pasqual of Caritas, ah, is a member of the board. Hill Salazar, who was the former of PDAP, PDAP, ah, it's a Canadian...
Not PDAF, ah?
Not PDAF, ah, senate. Ah, but he was the former executive director of Philippine Business and Social Progress, P B S P.
Hill, what's his last name?
Ah, Hill Salazar.
Salazar.
Ah, Lani Nanyangas is also a member of, ah...
Formerly of, ah, P I, P D I C?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ah... Ah, the former, the former health secretary, ah, Jaime Galvestan, is also a member of the board. I suppose that's nine already, sir.
Here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. You're missing one.
Sir, the B I R commissioner, sir.
Kasama na, kasama na sa doon. You mentioned the chair, the vice chair, S M Foundation.
Ah, the, the executive director of Code NGO, Doddo Makasai, it is, was a part of... I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you you're here.
And then from, ah, your establishment in two oh seven, nagbago ba 'yung membership niyo? Or it's roughly the same?
It's roughly the same, because...
Same organizations are the ones being...
Yes, sir. In and out, some don't, don't accredit it, they don't need it. Ah, some, ah, there are a lot of new accreditations also.
So, ah, when did you reach this level of three hundred twenty-five? Was it, ah, early on in your inception that you got the, a lot of members? Or, or continues, it's gradual ang...
It's gradual, sir. It was gradual. It started in nineteen eighty-nine, so...
Yung P C N C...
Nineteen ninety-eight, I mean.
Yung P C N C accreditation, ah, that's a scenic one on to get the tax deductions under the, under section thirty-four H?
Yes, sir.
Meaning the B I R will not give it if you don't have the P C N C?
Yes, sir.
Ah, okay. Okay, so it's, 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 in a sense, it's a captured market, no?
Yes, sir. Ah, in a sense also, it's so hard to get because we're very, we're, we're pretty much strict.
That's good, that's good. You should, I think it should, that's, that's right.
Yes, sir.
You're on the right track there, oh. Ah, so, since, since your establishment under the E O, ilan na 'yung nabigyan ng, ah, tax deductions under thirty-four H?
More than, ah, more than one... More than one thousand two hundred, one thousand three hundred, if I'm not mistaken. But last is between three hundred twenty-five to three hundred seventy-five.
Okay, are you at liberty to share that list with the committee?
Sir, it's in the website, sir.
It's on your website?
Yes.
Okay, very good, very good.
That helps our accredited NGO.
Blessed noon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the press briefing of Presidential Communications Secretary Sunny Coloma. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. We are pleased to share with you NEDA's report this morning that the gross domestic product of the country grew remarkably by seven point two percent in 2013, exceeding the six to seven percent target despite the series of calamities and natural disasters that struck the country last year. While GDP growth slowed slightly to six point five percent in the fourth quarter, the Philippines remains one of the best-performing economies in the region, similarly to China, which grew by seven point seven percent. For 2014, NEDA projects that the country will reach its GDP target of between six point five percent to seven percent. We will focus on growing exports, taking advantage of the improving global economy. We will also continue to reduce the cost and improve the ease of doing business to increase foreign direct investments. The government will improve linkages between agriculture and industry to boost the growth of these sectors. We are pleased to note that with manufacturing at the forefront, the industry sector achieved double-digit growth of twelve point three percent in the fourth quarter and ten point five percent for the full year. Government seeks to promote increased and enhanced employment opportunities to fully harness the vast potential of our highly talented workforce. Infrastructure projects will be implemented vigorously, especially in the rehabilitation of calamity areas. Major infrastructure projects, especially in the transport sector, will also be a significant growth factor. Most importantly, government remains focused on achieving inclusive growth by reducing poverty and increasing social protection. The updated Philippine Development Plan emphasizes the spatial or area-specific dimensions of development. Hence, government spending is directed at increasing the productivity and reducing the vulnerability of farmers, fisherfolk, and other marginalized sectors of Philippine society. Karagdagan lam po, the DFA will be issuing a statement on the government's position concerning the latest issuance of the Hong Kong Special Administrative Region. We will await the DFA statement and respond to your queries after the release of the DFA statement. Hangga na po akong tugunin ang inyo mga katanungan.
Thank you, Secretary. Do you have any follow-up questions on the statement of Secretary Wang Delafuente and Bombo Raymond?
Dun sa statement on the economy, ironically, tumataas po 'yung presyo ng commercial rise and some of the prime commodities. And although nagkaroon po ng rollback sa LPG by March, sinasabi tataas din po 'yung presyo nito. Tapos nagkaroon din ang increase dun sa fuel price. So, people are wondering, where can all this good news be realized po?
Kasama sa mga hamon sa pamahalaan, 'yung pagkontrol sa pagtaas ng presyo ng mga bilihin. Controlling inflation is one of the important economic tasks, economic management tasks of government. Kaya nga't masinsing sinusubaybayan nito ng ating mga autoridad sa panguna ng Banco Central, ang ating Department of Trade and Industry tumututok sa paggalaw ng presyo ng mga bilihin, 'yung mga staple commodities, lalong-lalo na dun sa mga lugar ng kalamidad. At tinitiyak natin na 'yung galaw ng presyo ay nasa loob nung ating mga inflation target. Sapagkat sinisikap ng pamahalaan na mapanatili 'yung purchasing power ng mga mamamayan. Kaya kasama naman 'yung mga aspeto na 'yan ng economic management dun sa ating overall economic development program.
Mader Lilia Tolantino?
Mike, please.
Sir, sinabi po niyo dito sa unang statement niyo na sinisikap natin 'tong pagbutihin itong agrikultura at saka itong ating mga industriya, ano po? Ang ibig po ba sabihin nito, 'yung magandang pinakita po ng ating ekonomiya na seven point three? Ay, ito po, seven point two. Nagrerepoba 'yan sa AMPOS, OFW remittances, o kasama po din 'yan 'yung mga industries na ito?
Ito po ang pahayag ni NEDA Secretary Arsenio Balisakan. Dalawa po kasing bahagi 'yan, supply side, demand side. Sa supply side, ang pinakamahaleng drivers of economic growth ay 'yung services at industry sector. 'Yung services sector nagambag ng three point six percentage points of the real GDP growth in the fourth quarter of 2013. Kasunod niyan, 'yung industry, two point eight percentage points. At 'yung agriculture, ang pinakamababa, zero point one percentage point. 'Yung fourth quarter growth sa supply side, ang nagdulot niyan, manufacturing, trade, finance, at real estate. Dun naman sa six point five percent expansion ng services sector, ang mga factors dyan ay 'yung strong demand for communications, land and air transportation, and storage and services incidental to transport. 'Yung sa fourth quarter, ang factors na binanggit na NEDA ay 'yung dagdag na biyahe at destinasyon na mga sasakyan panghimpa-papawid. Flights and destinations of the country's leading airlines increased. Nagkaroon ng increased air traffic, at 'yung dami ng pasahay cargo for tourism, as well as for relief operations after super typhoon Yolanda. 'Yung financial sector, malakas din ang naging kontribusyon nito. Lumago ito ng nine point nine percent sa fourth quarter. Ang mga factors dyan, stable business environment, manageable inflation rate of three point seven percent, 'yan ang tugon dun sa sinabi ni Wang, and low interest rates, as well as aid from other countries for those affected by typhoon Yolanda induced an increase in financial activity. Dun naman sa five point four percent growth in other services, ang nakatulong dyan, education and services, health and social work at community services. Again, this reflects the increased response to the devastation left by typhoon Yolanda, increased efforts of TESDA to provide short courses and training on skills. Likewise, tourism has been driving the sector's performance for 2013. Tourism gross value added reached seven hundred forty-eight point three billion pesos, fifty higher than in 2012. Sa industry sector naman, ang frontrunner ay manufacturing. Katulad ng aking nabanggit, double-digit growth, twelve point three percent in the fourth quarter of 2013. Eh, ang top performers ay chemical and chemical products. Triple-digit growth, one hundred twenty-four point five percent in the fourth quarter, following one hundred thirty-three point five percent growth in the third quarter. Sa demand side, binanggit natin supply. Sa demand side, ang drivers niyan ay household consumption, which contributed four point two percentage points at net exports. Lahat po niyan ay ayon sa ulat ni NEDA Secretary Arsenio Balisakan, na kanyang ipinahayag earlier this morning. Okay, Mader, sapat na ba ang aking katugunan?
'Yung pong, sabi niyo may umabot. Sasagaw pa naman ang announcement ng may DFA. Paano po makakaapekto itong, kung iba bumitang, matutuloy po 'yung sanction ng Hong Kong dito sa ating mga malalakbay na aalisin 'yung free visa, privilege? Ito makakaapekto po ba ng malaki ito, makakasama po ba ito sa growth rate natin? Lalo na 'yung ating mga OFW siyang nagpupunta doon, o ano kaya?
Intayin po natin 'yung pahayag, pero at face value, first impression, ang nabalitaan po natin, ang sakop lamang nito ay diplomatic and official passport holders. Kaya tila naman limited lang ang epekto nito. Dahil 'yung namang mga nagtatrabahong Pilipino doon, hindi naman diplomatic and official passports ang kanilang hawak, ordinary passports lamang. Pero hintayin na lang po natin 'yung pahayag ng DFA.
Sum minimal lang ang epekto.
Hintayin po natin ang pahayag ng DFA.
Selarina Monte?
Good afternoon, sir. Sir, dun sa opening statement niyo, you have mentioned that for 2014, our targeting, NEDA said that we're targeting six point five to seven percent, tama po ba?
Tama po.
Is that the official figure of the DBCC also? Kasi I believe it was six point five to seven point five for this year. So, meaning we're cutting or trimming our GDP target for this year?
We will need to verify in terms of responding specifically to the DBCC target. My statement was based on the transcript of Secretary Balisakan's statement.
So, meaning we have not yet officially revised the DBCC target?
I have not yet verified.
Sir, can I go dun sa DFA? Okay na ba? Sir, may sanction. Although you have mentioned that the DFA will still issue the statement, but offhand, kasi may mga succeeding sanctions paraon ipapatupad according to reports. Hindi ba tayo like, we're going to encourage our, since bulk of the tourists na pumupunta sa Hong Kong ay mga Pilipino, are we not going to urge our fellow men na patryotic sila, nationalistic na, huwag na lang din munang pumunta sa Hong Kong?
I have noted your comment, and I suggest we wait for the DFA announcement.
Ori Kalika of Philippine Star?
Sir, follow-up dun sa move ng Hong Kong. Do you see that as more political than economic? Because they're just making a political statement that you're supposed to apologize, but they're not taking the risk of losing Filipino tourists, because that might also affect the economy. So, how are you going to deal with that? Are you going to accept that decision? Dahil hindi naman idinamay ang mga ordinaryong Pilipino.
Kung magbabaliktanaw tayo sa nakaraang mga talakayan natin, kapag tinatanong ninyo 'yan, ang sagot natin ay ito. We continue to work together to achieve a mutually acceptable solution. Sa akin palagay, ay maiinam pa ring pagba... 'yung ganong posisyon habang inihintay natin ang pahayag ng DFA.
Do you see Beijing's hand in the way Hong Kong is dealing with us? And how do you intend to bring back the harmonious relationship that you're seeing with Hong Kong? Because Hong Kong used to be acting independently from Beijing before.
I'm taking note of your question, and after the issuance of the DFA statement, we'll be able to determine an appropriate reply. We will surely respond to queries related to the statement later on, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Bombo Raymond?
Just throwback dun sa APEC summit, kasi sa Indonesia. Sa title, meron silang usapan si Pangulo Kino at si Executive Liung, and wherein the leader committed to, I mean, to look for a solution of this issue. Parang na triedor, o parang hindi, parang hindi niya pinanindigan 'yung kanyang commitment sa Pangulo, 'yung sinabi niya na to fresh out instead of complicating the matter.
'Yun namang mga naging kaganapan, pagkatapos nung pagpopulong na yun, ay nakitaan natin ng pagkilos, o paggalaw. May nakita naman tayong forward motion in terms of achieving the goal of a mutually acceptable solution. Kaya, kung maari lamang, ay hintay na rin natin muna 'yung pahayag ng DFA.
Also, sir, another throwback?
Hinakna'y lens natin, na 'yung kaganapan ngayon will have to be viewed within the context of a continuum, diba? Na nagsimula pa nung nag-usap ang leader nung dalawang panig sa APEC. Kaya meron namang tuloy-tuloy na pagkilos simula doon.
Sir?
Na umantong doon sa kasalukuyan.
Ba't kaya hindi natuloy 'yung supposed trip of Justice Secretary? Na icommit ng Pangulo noon kay Liung?
Kailangan kong iverify 'yan, 'yung tungkol dyan sa trip na 'yan.
Thank you, sir.
Still on Hong Kong, Joelle, Joelle, other issues? Okay, economy, Joelle Eggco?
Thank you, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Joelle.
Sir, 'yung ano, going to specifics lam po, 'yung inclusive growth, how do we, how are we going to attain this? In the face of, vis a vis, there are a growing number of Filipinos who perceive themselves to be poor, and the rising unemployment, and those negative things. So, how are we going to specifically address these problems?
We have specific programs, katulad nga nung Pantawid Pamilyang Pilipino Program, na kung saan bahagi doon, 'yung conditional cost transfer. Ang pinakamahalagang karagdagan dyan, 'yung additional ten billion appropriation for the 2014 budget. Dahil nun dati, ang coverage lamang nung CCT, mga anak na mga beneficiary families na nasa grade school. Ngayon ay sinasama na 'yung nasa high school. Dahil nga, doon sa finding ng Philippine Institute for Development Studies, nakapag, nakatuntong at nakatapos ng high school, hanggang eighty to ninety percent 'yung probability na magkakaroon ng trabaho. Kaya makikita natin, very proposed 'yung programa, very targeted, very specific. Merong specific program to produce a specific effect. Ngayon dun sa actual poverty reduction, let's keep in mind that we are still looking at the Millennium Development Goal. What is the Millennium Development Goal? It is to reduce poverty by half of what it was in the early nineteen nineties, which was thirty-one percent. 'Yung sa latest reckoning ng poverty level, nandun lang tayo sa twenty-six percent, I think, as of 2009. Well, every, eh, kailan ba 'yung huling, no? Sa periodic, 'yung pagano dyan, so medyo malayo pa. Kaya ang tinatarget na, paano natin niya mailalapit sa sixteen percent, which is the halfway mark na target doon? Kaya nga, kung mapapansinin niyo, 'yung mismong 4P's at saka CCT, specifically targeted din 'yan, diba? Four point three million families. 'Yung four point three million families, the average of five per family would translate to around twenty-three million. The twenty-three million will account for the twenty-three percent of the population that is classified as Class E. Diba? Kapag nagdemographics tayo, A to C is ten percent, D is sixty-seven percent, twenty-three percent is Class E. Kaya't kapag tinarget natin 'yung Class E na yun, through specific programs like 4P CCT, pati 'yung Phil Health. 'Yung Phil Health, mirror image 'yun nung CCT in the health sector. Kaya nga, sila ginawang compulsorily covered by Phil Health. 'Yung image naman, education, 'yung K to twelve, na para lahat makapag-aral. Kung naalala natin, ang baseline sa education, 'yung by the time they reach first-year high school, thirty-three percent, nung nag-enroll sa grade one, hindi na kasali. Kaya nga, para maging inclusive, para maging kasali, dinadagdagan 'yung appropriation para doon sa most needy. Dinadagdagan para siguradong makatapos sila ng high school. At kapag na-reduce natin 'yung dropout rate, dadami 'yung nakatapos ng high school, dadami rin 'yung magiging... dadami 'yung nakatapos ng high school, dadami rin 'yung magiging qualified for employment, lalong lalaki 'yung posibilidad na makakali sila doon sa poverty level. At 'yung binanggit ko pa kanina, spatial, area-specific. Saan ba 'yung mga pinakamahiirap na probinsya? Dahil kilala sila, kilala sila ng DSWD, they are known by family name, address, number of dependents, meron pa silang biometric. Ang ginagawa, kung sila ay farmers, coconut farmers ba sila? Kung coconut farmer sila, ang gagawin ng pamahalaan ay tutulungan silang mag-diversify para mag-increase ang kanilang income. Diba? Sinasabi natin, 'yung kung coconut harvest lamang, uh, napakababa ng kinikita nito, no? Kung magkakaroon ng intercropping with, with kakaw at iba pang high-value products, tataas 'yun by at least five to six times. Ganong ka-specific, pag fisher folk naman, 'yung pag-provide ng infrastructure like cold storage, para 'yung kanilang mga hinarvest na isda, pwede ring maging processed food, no, at maging higher value. Karagdagan doon sa coconut, pwede pa sila mag-diversify. At gagamitin din 'yung mga proceeds ng coconut levy na napasakamay na ng pamahalaan. Kaya very specific programs ang tinututok natin para matamo 'yung inclusive growth.
Sir, uh, I heard about the coconut levy, how are we supposed to use the coconut levy again? Sorry?
Nagagamit dahil ang pasya kuman, ang tunay na nagmamay-ari nito ay mismong mga farmers, uh, decided with finality by the Supreme Court. Dapat lang 'yung pakinabang mula sa pondong ito ay magtungo mismo sa mga coconut farmers. Dahil sa kanila kinuha 'yung levy na 'yun. Kailangan maibalik sa kanila 'yun sa pamagitan na mga kapaki-pakinabang na serbisyo na magpapataas sa kanilang kita at mag-aangat sa kanilang katayuan.
And we're talking here of how much ngayon levy?
Aalamin ko lamang, 'yung buong halaga nung coconut levy.
Oh, sir, thank you.
Paula Tienza.
Hi, sir, Magandang Hapon po.
Magandang Hapon.
Sir, Deputy Ombudsman's order of the Supreme Court to be reinstated. Uh, last time, we sent a text message to you and then you replied that you are about to, you had to read first the decision of the Supreme Court. Were you able to read that ready?
Sa totoo lang po, hindi pa, no? Pero ang aming namang, uh, posisyon sa mga ganyang bagay ay paggalang sa desisyon ng hukuman. Kailan man ay, uh, we are, we are abiding by decisions of, uh, of the court. Dahil sumusunod tayo sa batas.
Is there a motion for reconsideration?
'Yan po ay aalamin ko pa kung maghahaintay dyan.
Are you satisfied with the performance of the Solicitor General Hardelisa?
Opo.
So hindi natin siya papalikan?
Wala pong ganyang, uh, pinag-uusapan.
Sir, on the matter of the, uh, 'yung performance ni Soljen, okay lang ba sa palasyo?
Sa palagay ko po ay katanggap-tanggap, wala pong, uh, pahiwatig na hindi to katanggap-tanggap. The Solicitor General made a competent presentation of the government position during the oral arguments.
Um, may we know if the president has any reaction on that incident of that presentation?
Siyempre po, mahalagang issue ito at sinusubaybayan ng Pangulo ang maaaring maging kaganapan. Hingil dito. Meron pa namang nalalabing, uh, oral arguments na edarao sa February 18.
Okay, sir. Sir, on, um, still on economy, uh, there are, there are six pending bills at the House of Representatives and nine in the Senate. And the foremost of this is the House Bill 3112, which seeks to amend the Bank Secrecy Law of our country. Uh, may we know if the president is aware of this?
Ang aalamin ko para sa kapakanan natin lahat, ay 'yung hinandang, uh, list of priority bills, no? Dahil nakapagpulong na 'yung economic cluster. At, uh, nung nakaraang pagpupulong nila, naghi, naglatag na sila ng listahan ng mga priority economic measures. Aalamin ko kung isa na 'yun dun sa mga nakalinya.
The concern, sir, is of the businessman is that, um, uh, the Bank Secrecy Law is, uh, prohibits, prohibits the, you know, the unveiling of dollar account, not on the peso account. Uh, would, would not this set a, you know, a war precedent for the businessman? That's, that's the reason why we have businessmen here, because of the secrecy law on dollar accounts. And if you are going to, and then, sir, second, sir, is that, uh, uh, on this law, uh, proposed bill, uh, uh, magkakaroon ng kapangyarihan si, ang, ang Banco Central Governor, not the police, to, to, without any warrant, to check on the account. Uh, are we going to support this?
Lahat ng panukalang batas ay nabubuo pagkatapos ng pag-aaral ng ating mga mamabatas. Kung ito ay manggagaling sa ehecutibo at hindi sa kongreso, makatitiyak tayo na bago ihanda o ilatag o ihain ng isang panukalang batas, nakapagkaroon, nap, nagkaroon ng masusing pag-aaral, kung ano magiging implikasyon ito, no, sa ating kabuhayan at sa kapakanan ng mga mamamayan, kinokonsulta ang mga maapektuhang sektor, sa partikular na kasong binanggit mo, 'yung mismong industriya ng pagbabanco. Kaya't, uh, makatitiyak tayo na bago ihiain ng panukalang batas na 'yan, ay nakuha na ang kanilang mga pananaw at isinaalang-alang kung ano 'yung magiging kapaki-pakinabang para sa pinakamalaking sektor ng ating populasyon. Dahil 'yan naman ang, ang layunin ng bawat batas. At 'yan din ang, ang layunin ng demokrasya, diba? The greatest good for the greatest number.
Sir, last, uh, um, just to be, to put the, this thing in, in right perspective. The sponsor of the bill of 3112 is Speaker, no less, no less than the Speaker, Sunny Belmonte, and Representative Collyantes. Uh, are we safe to say that the president and the speaker have already in agreement with this?
Kailangan ko pang alamin, I need to verify, uh, specific information on that matter. I will get back to you.
Thanks, sir.
Joyce Maniaras of Manila Standard.
Sir, sir, 'yung sa ongoing po na operation sa Mindanao, uh, 'yung MNLF has said that nagspill over daw sa mga camps nila and, uh, specifically in two camps, in Datu Piyang and another one also in Magindanao. Uh, they said na pag hindi parang tumigil 'yung spill over, parang it's a looming war against the government as well.
Kailangan unawain 'yung nagaganap ngayon. Kailangan ding unawain natin na ang pangunahing responsibilidad ng ating sandatahang lakas at pambansang pulis ay pangalagaan ng kaligtasan ng ating mga mamamayan. Kung merong mga sektor na, uh, magbibigay ng puna, na ito ay sumasakop na sa kanilan lugar, ang mahalagang katanungan ay kung ang mga puersa ng ating AFP at PNP ay tumatalima, no, sa mga accepted rules of engagement. Sila ba ay, uh, uh, tumatalima pa rin sa mga, uh, importanting konserasyon na pag, na protection of human rights, na hindi, uh, indiscriminate 'yung paggamit ng, uh, ng puersa? 'Yan ang mga mahalagang konserasyon at makatitiyak tayo na lahat na pagkilos ng ating sandatahang lakas at law enforcement authorities ay tumatalima sa mga batayang prinsipong 'yan.
Um, one of the reasons why hindi kayo nagkaproblema with the MNLF was because itinimbry niyo sa kanila na magkakaroon ng operations. Precisely why tumulong din 'yung MI. Sa MNLF, nagkaroon din po ba ng ganong pagtimbre? Kasi I understand, under the peace agreement, parang dapat kayo nagko-coordinate din pag nagko-operate sa areas nila?
Wala pa akong impormasyon hingil sa specific, specificity, no, of 'yung, uh, sistema ngayon, no? Ang ambatid natin, and this was acknowledged also by, uh, MNLF, sila ay nagident, sila ay nagsabi rin, no, na makikiisa sila doon sa initial operations, especially insofar as, uh, their determination to prevent BIFF elements from intruding into known, uh, MNLF communities. I will need to verify 'yung aspect ng MNLF. Masasabi ko lang ay wala namang discrimination or wala namang, uh, uh, pag, wala namang pagkilos na ang intensyon ay magmadihadon or dominate against any particular sector. Dahil ang layunin nga natin ay mapatupad ang isang kasunduan hingil sa kapayapaan. Kaya nga, merong mga observers na nagsasabi na ang kaganapan ito ay maaaring taguri ang peace spoiler. Hindi naman natin kagustuhan na magkaroon ng karahasan sa ngayon. Kailangan lang ipagtanggol 'yung kaligtasan ng ating mga mamamayan at ang pangunahing layunin pa rin ay pairalin ang kapayapaan.
Sir, do you think the, the tables should be turned on the MNLF? That instead of complaining, they should actually be the ones saying na hindi sila tatanggap ng BIFF na mga, 'yung gusto magtago dun sa areas of their strong, uh, areas of stronghold nila?
Ano mang hakbang na makatutulong sa pagtamo ng katahimikan at kayusan? Kabilang na 'yung binanggit mo ay, uh, at sasangayunan, no, ng pamalaan dahil 'yan ang layunin natin. Na magkaisa ang mga mamamayan, ang lahat ng sektor sa pagka, pagkakaroon ng kapayapaan at kayusan.
Follow-up. Adrian Ayalin of ABS-CBN.
Good afternoon, sir. Follow-up lang po dun. Uh, may timetable po bang sinet si Presidente considering na maliit lang namang po 'yung BIFF? I understand sabi ng military, 'yung mga 1,000 lang 'yung forces nila. May timetable?
Wala po akong alam na timetable na itinakda ng Pangulo o ng AFP. Uh, sa lahat naman ng mga ganitong pagkakataon, nais natin na mawakasan 'yung pagkakaroon ng labanan o ng karahasan sa lalong madaling panahon. Dahil ang nais nating matamo ay 'yung katahimikan at 'yung kayusan. Wala sa interest natin na lumaon o humaba pa ang paglalaban at ang karahasan.
Um, considering na maliit po, um, hindi po ba natin naexpect na mas magiging mabilis po, um, kumpara sa naging, um, pagdeal with MNLF?
Sana nga, no, mas mabilis. Uh, kaisa kami ng lahat na umaasa na mas, mas mabilis at mas agaran ang magiging kalutas, uh, umiiiral na sitwasyon.
Sir, holdin' na lang. Um, 'yung si Datu Tenko na imi-meet po niya Presidente, may magbibigay po ba ng briefing si Presidente perhaps tungkol sa BIFF?
Ang alam ko ay ito ay courtesy call, no? At, uh, kung meron namang mga briefing, ang alam ko rin ay sufficiently aware naman siya, no, dun sa sitwasyon dahil kaugnayan siya ng ating, uh, peace panel. At patuloy pa rin 'yung konsultasyon sa pagitan ng, ng, uh, magkabilang panig.
Marge of SoTV.
Hi, sir. Um, follow-up lang dun sa ekonomiya. Um, nakita po natin sa agriculture sector, um, na 0.1%. So, sir, um, alam po natin na mali ito kumpara dun sa mga ibang sektor. So, ang ironeng po ay, alam naman po natin na the Philippines ay, um, we have vast agricultural lands. Ano po ba 'yung naging dahilan kung bakit mas mababa ito? At ano po 'yung ginagawa natin upang mas mapaunlad pa 'yung, um, indu- agricultureal sector?
Maaaring isa sa mga sanhin nito ay 'yung kalamidad din, no, na sumira sa mga pananim. Kung maalala natin, hindi lang naman dun sa Yolanda affected areas. 'Yung Yolanda, for example, affected 44 out of the 81 provinces of the country, no? At meron din tayong tayopunsanti na malaking epekto sa Central Luzon, including areas in Tarlak and Rebysiha na agricultural. Kaya, kailangan siya sa atin pa ito ng mas masinsin sapagkat ang ating, sa ating populasyon, malaking bahagi ng populasyon ang nasa agricultural sector. At marami ding malak, malalaking pondorin ang nailaan para dito. Kaya makatitiyak tayo na sa kasalukuyang taon pag-iibayuhin 'yung pagsisikap na maitaas ang productivity at output ng agricultural sector.
Sir, meron po ba kayong mga specific na programs or develop?
Meron, no? Dahil nga doon sa binanggit ko kanina, doon sa paglalatag ng national budget. 'Yung national budget natin ay nilatag doon sa five priority programs ng Philippine Development Plan. Dahil nga paulit-ulit natin sinasabi, gusto nating maka-achieve ng inclusive growth. 'Yung growth, nandun na tayo doon sa 7.2 GDP. 'Yung inclusive, kailangan ang palatandaan doon na iibsan 'yung kahirapan, nababawasan 'yung dami na mahirap. Kaya kung titignan natin 'yung 2014 national budget, napakapartikular nung mga programa na nakatuon doon sa pagbabawas ng kahirapan. If we look at the GAA, no, merong ganitong kakapal na dokumento sa aking tanggapan, ang balangkas nito ay according to, um, the programs of the Philippine Development Plan. Makikita natin kung ano 'yung mga specific programs directed at reducing poverty, including those that I discussed earlier, no, 'yung patungkol sa farmers and fisher folk. At kaya nga, spacial, S-P-A-T-I-A-L, province and area specific. Pwede ninyong hanapin kung saang probinsya 'yung pinapatupad. Pwedeng subaybayan ang mga mamamayan, effective ba 'yun o hindi effective? Ganong ka-targeted, ganong ka-proposed 'yung ating 2014 national budget in terms of addressing the poverty reduction target. Dahil kung maalala ninyo, gusto nating maatin 'yung, uh, demographic sweet spot, no, na pinag-usapan natin dito, that by 2019, ang magiging average per capita income ng ating bansa ay, uh, uh, $6,000, no? Hindi natin maatin 'yan kung 'yung pinakamarami sa ating lipunan ay mananatiling mahirap.
Uh, Bomber Raymond.
Sir, uh, good afternoon, sir. Wala bang, uh, directive to NF8 to shape up? Kasi masyado napaka-lame 'yung kanilang palusot, 'yung kanilang excuse na kung bakit, uh, nangyayari pa rin 'yung rice cartel and rice smuggling na, na pati sila napapaikutan. Wala bang parang like 'yung ginawa niya sa customs na shape up or a ship out?
Uh, para doon sa mga interesado ay, may makip, magbahagi ng, uh, merong Q and A, no, 'yung ating Department of Agriculture tungkol dun sa rice situation, sa rice importation, prices of rice. Kung kayo interesado, ay papamahagi ko sa inyo ito. Uh, dun tayo makakakuha ng mga specific details hingil dun sa mga frequently asked questions, no, katulad nung iyong binabanggit. Hindi ko lang dala ngayon.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Pero, parang kailangan kasi mapakinggan ng, kahit 'yung mga, alam kasi sa mga palengke, 'yung mga tindera, alam nila 'yung kala-karan dyan. So, parang, eh, masyadong bulag at bingi 'yung taga-NFA. So, wala bang parang stern warning, oh, damn, na magtrabaho naman kayo, alam ka ng tindera, kayo hindi niyo alam?
Eh, maari bang mas maging specific 'yung, 'yung, uh, katanungan?
'Yung mga cartel, sir, 'yung like 'yung, uh, price, uh, manipulation. Alam ng tindera na nagka, naghi-create 'yung mga cartel na ito ng panik, pinipila-pila 'yung mga buyers para mag-cost ng pagtas ng presyo. Eh, sinasabi ng NFA, hindi nila alam 'yung, napapaikutan sila. So, di ba parang it's a lame excuse?
Yes, sa lahat naman ng pagkakataon, ang layunin ng pamahalaan ay mapanatiling, uh, stable at affordable 'yung presyo. Maaring sa mga partikular na pagkakataon, meron mga ganyang observasyon, pero hindi ma, maaring mapahintulutan ang pamahalaan na magkaroon ng runaway, uh, price spiral dyan. Dahil sangkot dito ang pinakamaraming bilang ng ating mga mamamayan.
Mike Ubak of Inquirer.
Good afternoon, sir. Sir, just, uh, follow-up on the peace process. The disarmament has been a checklist issue and actually was one of the factors mentioned in the failure, uh, of the 1996 peace accord with the MNLF. And so the MNLF is now promising to, to engage in disarmament. Have we been informed of the nature of disarmament? Or whether will, this will be faced and for how long will the process be completed?
Ang termino na ginamit sa lang, sa ating peace agreement ay decommissioning. Mariing, eh, pinaliliwanag na hindi ito surrender. Walang, walang notion or element of surrender na pinag-uusapan kailan man. So, 'yung decommissioning, eh, deactivation of, uh, of arms, at ang kasunduan ay mag- at ang kasunduan ay magkakaroon ng third party that will serve as a decommissioning force. Pero dapat din nating unawain na habang nagaganap itong decommissioning, kinikilala na ng MILF 'yung magiging bagong anyo at bagong hugis ng kanilang partisipasyon sa pag-unlad ng kanilang region. They have acknowledged that they will have to actively, proposively transform themselves into a social movement. And they will take on the added responsibility of law enforcement in the area. Kaya matinkad ang contrast. Dati sila ay armed force, directly opposed to the armed forces of the Philippines, di ba? 'Yan 'yung dating sitwasyon. Na nakipagsunduan na sila sa ating republika, ibinababa nila 'yung kanilang armas, nagpahiwatig na sila ng kagustuhan na magbabago na ang hugis at anyo at sustansya ng kanilang kilusan. At ito ay magiging kilusan para sa pagpapunlad ng lipunan. At habang nagaganap ito, 'yung kanilang mga kasapi, kukunin na nila 'yung malaking pananagutan na magpatupad ng kaayusan doon sa kanilang area. They will assume the responsibility of taking on law enforcement and police duties in the area. Kaya makikita na, this is a very substantial transformation. This is a very significant change in the form and substance of what the MILF used to be and what it will become as a result of the peace agreement.
So, if there will be no, the word being used is decommissioned forces and later on, under the autonomous expanded and more powerful, more meaningful autonomy given to them, to be given to them, and they will be in charge with peace and order, it means that they will have to create their own force? Or they will have to apply or be integrated into the police and AFP?
'Yung mga detalye na 'yan ay tinalakay doon sa power sharing annex. Doon sa aspeto ng ano 'yung mga powers that will be shared? What are the powers that are exclusive? Ang aking binanggit lang ay doon sa aspect ng normalization, which describes the specific aspect of decommissioning of armed forces. I think if we would refer to the annex on power sharing, mas specific 'yung pagdidiscuss tungkol dyan.
So, 'yung decommissioning natin, hindi automatic na disarmament 'yan, right?
Sabi na lang natin na ang term na pinagkasunduan ng magkabilang panig ay decom-
Kasi if they will be in charge with peace and order, bakit nga ba ibababa pa? Eh, kukunin din nila later on kasi nga in charge nila sa autonomous region. So, bakay kaya, I'm just trying to guess, and so I'm asking questions, kung ganun po ang purpose?
Yes. Makklarify natin 'yan pag nireview natin 'yung power sharing. I think ang significance nung decommissioning is precisely to signal the end of hostilities. Precisely to signal na talagang katahimikan at kaayusan na 'yung pinatutunguhan ito. Kaya habang merong question of arms, di ba? Parang hindi complete o hindi substantial 'yung notion of peace. Pero pwede nating maklarify pag tinuhayan natin 'yung power sharing annex.
Thank you, sir. One more issue, sir. Since 'yung power sharing, nag-agree na 'yung national government and soon to be created autonomous region, so medyo wala masyado siguro problema dun. And one more issue maybe, 'yung plebiscite na kasi i-inlarge or you will carve out a new territory out of the existing, i-inlarge mo. How confident are we na based on our discussions with stakeholders and the people na this time papasa po 'yung sa plebiscite?
Katulad ng mga nakaraang electoral exercises, kailangan din 'yung proseso ng paghahatid ng impormasyon, 'yung pagpapaliwanag kung ano ang iba't ibang aspeto nito. Sa anumang proseso, kinakailangan magkaroon ng sapat na pag-unawa, sapat na kaalaman ang mga mamamayan para makapagbuo sila ng matibay na pasya at paniniwala hanggil doon sa pagboto nila. Kaya kasama doon sa proseso, 'yung paglalahad, 'yung kompletong paglalahad ng lahat ng mga probisyon. Nakita nga natin na doon sa initial na pagtugon, dito sa completion of the four annexes, meron ng mga naglahad ng kanilang mga reserbasyon. At sinabi nga ng pangulo kahapon na sana 'yung kanilang reserbasyon ay hindi kabatay sa fear of the unknown. 'Yung fear of the unknown will be resolved if there is knowledge. So, what is unknown will become known. Kaya gagawin ang pamalaan ng lahat ng nararapat para maging buo, komprehensibo, ganap 'yung pag-unawa na mga mamamayan kung paano isasagawa itong bangsa moro political entity. Sa lahat ng mahalagang aspeto nito, simula sa power sharing, wealth sharing, transitional arrangements, normalization, pati na rin 'yung bangsa moro waters. Para lahat ng mga may taya, all the stakeholder groups will have sufficient information to be able to make an informed decision when they vote on it during the plebiscite that we hope will take place in 2015.
Sir, patanong lang, 'yung Transition Commission TC, the all 15 members will be meeting with the President this afternoon?
Hindi ko batid dyan. Basta sila 'yung merong responsibilidad hanggil sa pagbuo nung basic law. Nando sa schedule yata 'yan eh.
Yes, sir. Ang nakalagay lang TC, photo op, so presumably-
Umaasa tayo na lahat sila nandoon para kumpleto.
Sir, ano pa nga palang agenda nito at nung cabinet meeting ngayon?
Sa cabinet meeting ay Yolanda ang agenda. Magkakaroon din ng updates kasi nung previous meeting ay nag, may initial report si Secretary Montejo tungkol sa storm surge. Gumawa sila ng simulation studies on storm surge in Eastern Visayas. And they promise to come up with more detailed studies on storm surge at pati na rin 'yung landslides. And the other part will be updates on Yolanda rehabilitation. Mag-iissue ako ng update sa inyo pagkatapos ng meeting. Kung gusto ninyo ngayon o bukas na. Ngayon na lang siguro. Para makapagpahenga kayo bukas.
We have to wrap up this press conference. Last two questions. Ori Kalika.
Sir, pwede lang po ng komento ng Palacio dun sa pagfile ng kaso against former Chief Justice Renato Corona. Do you support this or do you welcome this lalupat? Kinikwestion 'yung conviction niya ng impeachment court before.
Batid natin na ang pinagmula nito ay una 'yung impeachment, 'yung impeachment na humantong sa impeachment trial at 'yung impeachment trial na humantong sa fiction and ouster of the former chief justice. Logical continuation lamang ito na 'yung mga paratang sa kanya ay inilahad sa Ombudsman at 'yung Ombudsman naman sinuri 'yung mga dokumento at evidencia na inialay kabilang na 'yung mga ibang naiuugnay dun sa impeachment trial. At humantong sila sa conclusion na merong sufficient evidence regarding alleged ill-gotten wealth. Kaya naisampan na nila 'yung sa Sandigam Bayan. Ito ay bahagi ng isang legal process. At kung sinabi natin noon na 'yung conviction ng Chief Justice in an impeachment trial proves the viability of our democratic processes, siguro isa din to sa mga inaasahan na makita ng ating mga mamamayan na maari palang makakuha ng katarungan doon sa aspeto ng ill-gotten wealth. Wala namang tong pinagkaiba doon sa mga plunder cases din na nai-file kasi 'yung naman ay patungkol sa iba pang mga matataas na government officials. Ang mahalaga dito, pinapakita natin na evidence basically sa press release o sa trial by publicity, dinaan ito sa proseso ng pagkalap ng konkretong evidencia hanggang humantong doon sa paghahain ng complaint. Kaya siguro dapat nating ikagalak at ikatuwa na nagkaroon ng progreso doon sa proseso ng paghahanap, katotohanan at katarungan.
Ah, sagot niya lang po dun sa sinasabi niyang patuloy na political persecution ng Palacio.
Paano ito matatawag na persecution? Samantalang ang batayan ay documentary evidence. Siguro kung naging patuloy lamang 'yung pagparatang sa pahayagan o sa mga programa ng television, 'yun siguro 'yung masasabi nating walang batayan. Pero ito naman ay pagkilos ng isang independent constitutional body that is the Ombudsman. We trust that this action was taken by the Ombudsman on the basis of objective gathering of information and the case was filed based on concrete evidence. It's the independence of the office and the integrity of the Ombudsman herself that is on the line here. That's why we join our people in hoping that this is a process that will have a beneficial outcome.
Adrian Aileen of ABS-CBN.
Sir, 'yung sa Hong Kong, meron na pong statement 'yung DFA and ang sabi po ay the government expressed deepest regret. 'Yung ginamit pong word is regret and not accept? Ibig sabihin po ba, tinatanggap po ito? Or maari pong may ibang hakbang pa pong gawin ng gobyerno?
Sana po, habang sinasagot ko kayo, ay binabasa ko rin 'yung statement nila. Mahirap yatang sumagot ng batay lamang sa narinig na tanong. Pinangako ko naman sa umpisa ng ating paykipagtalakayan na kapag natanggap na at nabasa na 'yung buong statement ng DFA, ay magbibigay din tayo ng ating pahayag. Kaya kung papahintulutan ninyo, bigyan lang kami ng kaunting pagkakataon para gampanan 'yung aming tungkulin dito.
Oh, sir, thank you.
Vansh.
Hello, sir. Ano po na pag-usapan sa meeting ni President at UK Secretary of State William Hague? Is it about the peace o sa Mindanao o pagtulong sa Yolanda?
May ikling courtesy call lang po yun. Mamaya ay magkakaroon ng joint press briefing si Secretary of Foreign Affairs at si Foreign Minister of UK. Batay doon sa mga naunang ulat, nagcentro doon sa naging observasyon niya o 'yung kanyang mga comments regarding the Yolanda, post-Yolanda situation. Mamayang pag nagkaroon ng joint press briefing, ay magiging mas malawig 'yung paliwanag tungkol sa buong latag na mga issue na tinalakay sa pagdalaw ng UK Foreign Minister.
Sir, another issue. Ano pang mensahe po ninyo sa mga nanggugulo? Kasi according to Deputy Speaker Balindong, Sabi ay FFF give peace a chance. They should let the negotiation run its course. Since the inception of peace talks, they made it clear that they were opposed to it.
Nais nating matamo ang katahimikan, nais nating maganap ang peace process. Kaya patuloy ang panawagan natin na makilahok ang lahat ng sektor para magtungo tayo sa kapayapaan at mabawasan o matigil na ang karahasan.
Okay, sir. Regarding po dito, kasi as you have said tungkol dito sa Hong Kong, is it possible na nagkaroon daw ito ng sanctions sa Philippines dahil daw po sa hostage drama because of ang failure apology by the President?
Kaya nga po nagsisikap ang bawat, nagsisikap ang ating pamalaan na mabigyan ng maayos na katugunan dahil gusto na rin naman nating matuldukan itong buong issue ng naganap sa ating bansa noong 2010. Kaya patuloy naman 'yung pagsisikap natin na magkaroon ng katanggap-tanggap na resolusyon ang usaping ito.
Sir, may nagpapatanong lang po. Any reaction po sa naimbestigasyon sa paggalugi ng Home Guarantee Corporation na makakaapekto sa pagpapatayo ng housing projects sa Yolanda calamity?
Ayon sa ating RA 10149 or Good Governments Act, merong performance standards ang lahat ng mga GOCs at kinakailangang matupad nila ang mga performance standards nito. Anumang deviation o paglihis sa mga itinakdang performance standards ay kinakailangang matukoy, mapag-aralan at mabigyan ng karampatang solusyon dahil ang nakataya dito ay pondo ng bayan.
Okay. Thank you very much, Secretary Sani Coloma.
Maraming salamat sa inyong lahat.
Thank you. Radio TV Malacan yang back to main studios of PTB4 and Raja ng Bayan. Connectado ka.